We don't have anybody participating via remote, so we don't need to do roll call. We'll also be skipping the executive session. I can give offline explanations for that. Uh, so we'll move right ahead to approval of minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look over the minutes? Well, sorry. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I'm, so again, it might be my board docs naivete, but um, logging in publicly, I don't see any of the draft minutes posted, so personally, I'd prefer to wait to approve them until they're posted.
Does anybody have an objection to holding them off till the next, uh, go ahead, Allison.
I just have a question, because they're, they are attached, so do you mean visible for the public?
Yeah. Without logging in?
Yeah.
So I'm fine with that. And then we will go ahead.
Also, there's only one set of minutes that are included. Does the meeting, the agenda item says there's three meetings, but there's only one that was included.
Yep, so try to get that corrected for the next meeting and go through those. So then we'll move on to public comment. Do we have anyone present who wishes to make a public comment? Feel free to, oh.
Just up here, sir?
Yep. Let me get the timer right here.
Hi, um, my name is Tony Brackett. I live at thirty great, thirty-eight Grace Street in Amherst. Uh, my twins are freshmen in Amherst Regional High School. We moved to Amherst in the summer of two thousand eighteen from Provincetown, looking for a really solid school district. I was a member of the Provincetown School Committee for four and a half years and chair for three and a half years. I'm a semi-retired musician and teacher, having had a performing career in New York and taught private music lessons to children and adults since nineteen eighty-one. Currently, I teach chamber music at the Juilliard School in a pre-college division, which is a Saturday music program for musically gifted kids between the ages of eight and eighteen. While I'm horrified to read of all this anti-trans, um, uh, things that have been going on at the middle school, I did not come here to speak to that this evening. I'm here to share my concerns about block scheduling. I feel there's a huge inequity regarding block scheduling. Students are running one year's worth of material in half a year. We're piling on an enormous amount of information half the time and not only expect students to grasp and understand what they're learning, but also remember what they are learning and try to apply it. I think we're kidding ourselves. If you talk with your teachers and ask them what they think, they'll agree with me that it is not a great way to learn. Do we really want all of our high school students, all of our students proceeding at the pace of college courses? For the small percent of students at the top of the academic food chain, I'm sure this is fine, but what about the average student? What about the less than average student, the student with an IEP? Kids like my daughter in the Ames Program. There's no time for these courses to sink in. These kids are being robbed of time. And what about attention spans? We just came out of the pandemic and kids all over the country have far less ability to stay focused than they previously did. Try one-on-one teaching with a college student in this town who is unable to make eye contact with you in the private music lesson. Cramming a year's worth of learning into half a year with P D minute classes in which the teachers have no choice but to take breaks and bring kids outside to move around so they don't fall asleep or tune out in class. This is what's going on in our classrooms at the high school, and teachers agree with me. They agree that this is a very difficult situation. There are more disciplinary problems, lower grades, worse attention spans. We already have honor status and A P courses for those students who feel they need to be pushed and for those parents who feel that they want to push their kids. Why combine that with the block scheduling? I hate that my son had Latin in eighth grade and then not again until the second half of ninth grade. I was really worried about how much of that information he would retain, and it was a struggle. I hate that music ensembles only meet for half a year. Kids need time. High school is the last opportunity to have time, time to read books for pleasure, to dig into a project, to get a part-time job, to play sports, to sit in your room.
My time is up. You can even finish.
I'm sorry, um, or in the woods or in the field and just think, once kids graduate from high school, all that will be gone. Everyone knows the joke, how do you get to Carnegie Hall? The answer is practice. The thing with music is, the more you practice, the better you get, the more you understand, the more the information stays with you. Practice over long periods of time so that you really learn and understand the information, so that the information stays with you. This is not possible if all the information shoved it to four months. Apply that here to our academics. When the course is stretched out over an entire school year, there is more time for the students to understand and remember what they have learned. Time is the answer. Kids need time. And my last comment is a question. Where is the data that was used to determine that block scheduling was the right decision for this academic year, coming out of a pandemic lockdown with mask wearing? Is it available online someplace? Can the parents and teachers have access to this data? I can't find it anywhere. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to make a public comment? Is it possible to?
Did you want to make a public comment?
Is it possible to throw the written public comment up?
Oh, just a point of order. Um, since the public comment was listed at seven, since we didn't have our executive session, just like maybe we could look around at seven and see if there's anyone else who shows up.
Yep, we could do that. And we'll be scrolling through them. They're also available in the board docs packet. Next, we have the superintendent's update.
Good evening. Um, it's my first one of these. Uh, so we're at the time of year where there's a lot of, uh, events going on. I'm going to try to list a few of them. Uh, by no means an exhaustive list, but a few things that are coming up pretty soon, uh, that I want to make sure that people are aware of and then they can, uh, research the specific times of day for some of these, because some days have more than one event. But I did want to start with that and just sort of go through some of what's coming up for, for folks. So, uh, this Friday is Summit Academy Graduation, so that's on, uh, Friday morning. Later in the day on, on that, uh, June second, which is Friday, uh, Nick Yaffe, who's in the Amherst Schools, but nonetheless had a lot of the students that are in our regional schools, is having a, uh, sort of a meet and greet. Nick is retiring at the, uh, end of the school year, and he's worked with the district for a long, long time and knows a lot of kids, uh, so they're having a fairly informal gathering there to, you know, say hi and goodbye to, to Nick, uh, at, at Wildwood. On Saturday, uh, Chutesbury Town Meeting, which is the final step in the process of, of our budget, uh, there's a small piece, the Amherst Town has to budget, um, process that they have to do relative to capital, but otherwise, uh, Chutesbury is his last sort of operating budget step that needs to happen. According to my schedule, prom's on the fourth. On the fifth is the senior dinner. Senior awards is on the seventh. The eighth is the seniors, uh, go and visit the elementary schools that they went to, which is a nice event, uh, go back and sort of see their teachers and, uh, younger students, uh, and then graduation is on the ninth. So a little more than a week and the seniors are going to graduate. So those are the sort of events coming up, uh, in the next week or so. I'm probably sure I missed many others and, uh, that are out there and, and going on. But, uh, hopefully it gives a flavor for what's coming up in the next week or so for a lot of folks in the, in the, uh, regional schools. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight was give you a little update on the, on the Title Nine Investigation. Uh, when we reached out to the, to the investigator, originally there was just one particular, uh, incident they were looking into that has obviously grown. Um, and so it's, it, you know, and having conversations with him, uh, partly just because his schedule was not as free as, as we ultimately needed it to be, is taking a little bit of time just to sort of have, uh, his other things that he's working on. You know, sort of clear up so that he can spend more time with us, but nonetheless, in, in chatting with him last week, he was indicating that it's, uh, a good chance it'll probably be August before we get the full report. Uh, so I just want to set some expectations there. It's going to be, um, later in the summer before we hear the, the final, final on all of that. Um, obviously, if it comes in before that, we'll, we'll share that out as best we can. There'll be aspects that can be public facing and there's aspects of it that won't be. And so as we, as we go through that process, um, I'm definitely staying very, uh, hands off, just mostly making sure he's got what he needs to do, the research that he needs to do and to ask the questions and see the people and, and do the work that, uh, is necessary to, to find out, uh, what's, what's going on and what happened and, and what we need to do is, uh, we'll determine from what he, uh, finds out in his investigation. So I did want to just give you a chance to, um, set your expectations about when that will be happening. And that's really all I have for an update for tonight. Have any, answer any questions? Anyone to ask?
Any questions or comments? That was like a tie. Jennifer and then Allison.
Doug, are you or are we allowed to release the name of the investigator?
That's a great question. Um, I don't see why we couldn't. Uh, it's a gentleman by the name of Ed Mitnick.
Could you say that again? Ed what?
Mitnick.
Mitnick?
Yeah, hopefully I'm pronouncing it correctly. Um, he does this type of work professionally. He's part of a, a organization that does these types of, of, uh, research work.
Thank you. I have a question about, um, graduation. In the past, uh, the regional school committee member's been invited to participate in graduation. Is that the case again this year? And if so, what do, what's the protocol?
So I would presume yes. I believe I, I had a very brief conversation after a fire alarm with the principal, uh, Talib Siddique. So they were, you know, striking the right balance of how many people on stage versus not, because it starts to get awkward if it gets too many. But I would presume that the, you know, the, what we've done in the past will be available again. I'll get you some details and, and get those sent out, so I'll make a note of that.
I'll be there. Look, go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions about the, or a question and comment about the lunch program. Just curious, how are we looking for lunches for the summer?
So, um, we're, so if we have, in our various programs that we run, if we have more than half the students that are participating in those programs eligible for free or reduced lunch, then we can provide meals to every student. Um, we're still gathering a little bit of information for the, for this building, for some programs that are happening in this building. We're close to the sort of threshold. I'm hoping that we get there just because it's a, it's a great opportunity to provide meals. But the other sites around, uh, that we, we traditionally have and, 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 uh, uh, have used in the past, we'll, we'll have, we'll have meals as well this summer.
And the other thing is a comment. With my expressive languages order, I have a hard time pulling up vocabulary, so when our food service director was here, I couldn't pull it up. But he was mentioning how we were doing, um, lunches that were specific to holidays, and I couldn't, I couldn't pull it up in my head. But when I was doing my, um, early childhood ed at Greenfield Community College, I remember learning about the tourist approach. And that is where you learn about cultures on the day of their celebration. And, you know, we should really be doing it on days that it's not their celebration, that we should be trying to incorporate them at other times and not on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, so we'll move on to the chairs update. Easy, I don't have one. So are there any school committee announcements? Jennifer?
So I just wanted to share with the committee that I participated in the clerical awards, um, committee. Uh, Deputy Westmoreland asked me to be the school committee member on the committee that, um, takes and reviews, um, clerical awards. So as part of the clerical staff contract, they have an award that is, is given out each year. And, uh, anyone can nominate clerical staff. So, um, this year's winners for the region were Will Neelya Melendez, the dean's assistant at the high school, and Edgardo Luciano, the principal's assistant at arms. And it was very heartwarming and very inspiring to read and review all of the nominations. Will Neelya Melendez in particular, uh, was nominated by several people and they were all students, and she was the only one who, uh, who had any nominations by students, so that was very, uh, it was very heartwarming, as I said. That's it.
And, uh, I don't, I don't know if you guys discussed it or not. Is, isn't this the second year in a row that Edgardo has won it?
I believe that is true, and I think it's well deserved. We did discuss that.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I just want to shout out both of them. They're both rock stars, so. We have any other committee announcements? Allison?
The negotiating subcommittee is going to meet on, uh, Wednesday of next week. Um, that's June seventh at four fifteen in the middle school.
Perfect, thank you. And Peter?
Uh, policy subcommittee meeting is, uh, this Thursday at seven o'clock. It's virtual, um, so anyone can follow, and I'm not sure if our librarians are here yet. But we also have another policy item coming up later on in the agenda that I was, um, if, if it works out for their schedules, um, some, some of our librarians may be able to come and speak to. So, uh, we'll see where we're at in the agenda when we get there.
And that's, that's one that was on the previous agenda that got pushed right.
Correct, yeah.
Any other announce? Oh!
Well, I guess since everybody's talking about subcommittees, I have a question for Doug, which is, we have on the calendar a subcommittee meeting Monday, and I'm wondering, are we going to do that?
If you'd like to, be happy to do it.
Okay, well.
Which means we'll, we'll need it posted on, uh, Thursday.
What did I say? Subcommittee, yes. Budget subcommittee. I don't know what I said. Anyway, um, I'll be in touch then.
Okay, yeah, I think as long as we get it posted by, uh, you know,
Yeah.
five o'clock on, on Thursday, we should be fine.
Okay.
And we've got one before. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I just have a comment about public comments. I would like to let people know that everybody on this committee has different agendas and different ideas. And please don't just send it to a few who you feel will react to it. Please send it to everybody, because you never know what you're gonna get. Thank you.
Any other committee announcements? Right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item.
So, interest, that's just a little bit, uh, to give you, uh, you know, given the, the recent comments and, and, uh, concerns in the community, you know, we thought it would be a good idea, the, the chair, uh, thought it would be a good idea to, to bring some of our, uh, principals forward to tell a little bit about what happens in the schools and, and to have an understanding of, of what and how we approach, um, uh, students in the L G B T Q I A plus community. Um, and so we've asked Mr. Siddique to join us tonight, and Mr. Sharon will join us, but I think it's going to be a little later. He had a, a prior commitment and the endpoint is variable, so we'll hopefully see him a little bit later. We may have to do this in sort of two different stages. Attached to your agenda is, um, a, uh, a broader, I believe, statement that all the principals signed off on relative to, uh, this a, a couple of weeks ago in, in the newsletter and then, uh, and I believe Mr. Sharon's, uh, sort of, uh, listing for the middle school is, is there as well, and then of course we have Mr. Siddique to join us tonight and, and tell us a little bit about the high school and how, how they approach it. So Talib, if you would.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so the high school has been working to create an inclusive environment for everybody for quite a long time, but students specifically who identify as in the L G B T Q community. There was a L G B T Q literature class that was started maybe ten or at least ten or fifteen years ago. It's been offered to students since then. We also have a, a student club called Saga, Sexuality and Gender Awareness, or Alliance actually, Sexuality and Gender Alliance, who supports students who identify as an ally or at an L G B T community, L G B T Q community. Also, when teachers start just about any of their new classes, one of the first things they do, the icebreaker activities and asking students their name and preferred pronouns. Our counselors do the same thing, and then they, they also offer support in making sure that teachers know about it, also communication with families if they need to, as well as, um, communicating with I S, our information systems, to have their preferred name put into Power School so that they can have their, see it every time they look themselves up, or if their family looks them, look them up, they'll also see it. And then also, you know, trying to support students who have ideas about ways to support and make, um, bringing awareness and visibility to folks in L G B T Q community. Last, I think it was the beginning of last year, some students and our teachers came to me to let me know they wanted to do a mural in our hallway, it's down actually in the tech wing, with some, um, allies and people who have been pioneering from, I think one of the dates on there, one of the people in the picture is from eighteen ninety-five, all the way up to someone, um, Ocean Vaughn, who's still living, Harvey Milk, is another person who's on there, and there are five people who've strived, spent their lives working for, fighting for L G B T Q rights. And there's a plaque there that spells out clearly what their mission, their life's mission was and is for, um, Ocean. Also, uh, you know, since the graphic article came out, there's definitely been more ribbons and more stickers and people making more of an effort to express their support for people in the L G B T Q community. As well as Saga, they did make a lot of posters in the colors of, uh, trans awareness with positive messages that they put throughout the building. There's one on the library door, there's many others throughout the hallways. Some of the messages say things like, we are here with you, uh, trans love is beautiful, trans lives matter, things of that nature. So, and we do have a great community of folks who whenever there is a concern that they find out, a student or all the adults in the building, any sort of concerns, but, you know, it's on everyone, it's a little bit more on people's awareness right now. Any issues or potential conflicts or anything that happen, they make sure to let a counselor or administration know, and we've been following up with those. There haven't been any recent incidents. Thankful, fingers crossed. Things have been pretty mellow the last few weeks. We did have our senior prank today, but they, they kept it pretty cool. They brought some tents inside the school. So that was, I actually didn't mind it. It was easy cleanup, a little bit of annoyance, but it's all right. So again, other than, you know, it, so again, trying to, as a community, as a school, teachers, administrator, counselors, all the adults, we do try to promote and respond to incidents when we find out people aren't being accepted, when there's, you know, bullying or anything of that nature happening. And if there is any other concerns that are brought up, follow up with the students and the families, try to support them as best we can. Now, our, our counselors are generally the first line of support for a lot of those folks. Uh, part of even having advisory when it was in effect was to create another opportunity for students to make a connection with an adult, have a, at least one trusted adult that they can turn to here in the school. I believe we've done a pretty good job. It's a public school, of course, so it was always a work in progress and continuing to try to increase our efforts and support for folks. That's a quick rundown of some of the things we're doing. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, real, real quick. So I have, I have an easy one and then I guess a, a less easy one, but the, um, so the mural, have, have you guys had the dedication for that yet or?
Not yet. No, that's going to be coming up. I forget the date. The next couple of days is going to be coming up, yeah.
And then, um, I'm wondering if, if you've kind of gauged any sort of response from, from at least openly L G B T Q I A plus students to the, to the increase though, like the signs and ribbons and these sorts of things. Like, is it appreciated? Are, are, are folks saying that they feel more welcome or?
Uh, I think it's appreciated. There, I do think we have a pretty welcoming culture in general, so I think that most of the folks, regardless of their background or how they identify gender-wise, religion, et cetera, they generally feel pretty welcome, and if we, if they don't, then we often hear about it. I know a lot of the students, you know, when the article first came out in the graphic, a lot of the counselors started checking in with students who they know identify in the L G B T Q community, and also the students who, um, were involved in writing the article. And the overwhelming response to them was they felt the high school was a supportive place for them and they're free to be themselves, and I do think it was also helpful that they were able to go to the middle school and offer support for the students down there. And that is definitely something we plan on doing in a more structured way, mentoring programs for our students to help mentor middle school students, and hopefully middle school students will end up mentoring some elementary school students someday. But not only around these issues, but in the whole transition and being a part of this community, the seventy-two alignment, that's going to be a piece of it, is the student mentoring connection with one another. Don't have a solid plan, but that's the idea, and we'll work out the plans this summer and throughout next year.
Thank you. Allison?
Thank you for that. Um, you mentioned this a, a couple of times or, or suggested it, and I'm just wondering if you could walk us through more sort of step by step if, um, what is the process and the approach that you and your team take when, when a student does, um, encounter some issues or experience some, um, harassment, bullying, um, et cetera. What is the step-by-step process and, um, how are the different ways that, that you or your team are hearing about those things when they do arise?
So we hear about them in a variety of ways. Uh, sometimes they'll be a witness to whatever happened, the conflict or the issue. Uh, sometimes it's friends of the, the target of the bullying or aggression. Now with, um, social media, it's a pain, but it's also helpful when folks screenshot things or send them to us because it's, it's proof of what has taken place. So in the beginning, it's really talking to the person who's been identified as the target, and then anybody else who we feel has information about what happened, and then connecting with the families and then creating a support plan for them. And the, the, um, the aggressor, slightly different approach also is in thinking potential consequences for that person, and also there may be some, uh, try to make as many opportunities, educational moments as possible, so there may be some, uh, they may, may need to have to, you know, conversations with their counselor about what happened and kind of what led up to it, to get a, a better understanding of everything involved. Things are often nervous, cut and dry. It's often two sides, there's always two sides of every story, and try to find out as many, as many of the details as possible.
Thank you.
Uh, Peter?
Yeah, um, so, uh, you know, on the topic of like the avenues that students have to, to raise concerns, so, um, like, do you think that, like, at the start of the school year, that, that, um, making students aware of all those opportunities that they have to raise concerns, whether it's a concern about the experience they've had with students or with staff or, or some other concern, that they, they know those avenues? I'm, and the reason I ask, I'm, I'm just thinking of the high school as this, this place where, um, people are always leaving, people are always coming, right? So every year you onboard a quarter of the, of the student population, and so it's a new building, every, every adult here is new, and so, um, you know, advisory would seem to be like that place where you kind of, you know, here is the, here's the standard process that in every room and every advisory, you know, in the first week, every student knows that, oh, if I have, you know, a concern about a staff member, I can go here. a concern about a staff member, I can go here and I'm going to be protected in, in bringing my concern forward. So, just, I guess, I, so I'm just wondering about, you know, like, those sort of systems that are in place, that, just to make sure things aren't forgotten.
Yeah, it starts with information getting sent home in the beginning of the year, and then the first day of school, we do have assemblies where part of the assembly is other students giving the message to students, things that they wish they'd known when they were, you know, just coming to the school. Also, explaining to them how important their guidance councils are, making connections with teachers, or if they can go to the administration with any concerns that they do have. And then those messages are, they're reminded of those things that you get in their classes. And then periodically, when we have, we're doing it more this year around break times, having, you know, the reminders about what the expectations are around some of our rules, but also that, you know, remind the students often that they can reach out with any concerns they have to the adults. And our counselors, when they meet with, when they, so when they go to the eighth grade, when they talk to the eighth graders, as part of their speech to them is encouraging them, letting them know that they're there for them, and then that message continues throughout their time here. We try to do it in a variety of ways, again, so it's messages directly from adults, it's emails, it's when we have assemblies, things of that nature, so.
I had another question. So, June's the first day of Pride Month, right, or June, Thursday is the first day of Pride Month, which is June. Are, are you guys doing anything extra this year?
I know part of it will be the ceremony for the mural, and then we do also have, I'm trying to remember the name, Authentic Self, the photo exhibit with pictures of families who are transgender, non-binary, and their stories. We have those throughout the school now, the exhibit, and it's some students, some of the families are from our community here, and some are from much broader, from across the country in the world. The exhibit is gonna be moving to the middle school in a couple of weeks. There are, I know Saga does plan on doing something, I don't remember exactly what the plan is right now, but we do have a few events and announcements planned.
Any other questions? Peter?
So, like, on the idea of onboarding again, so the other large subset of the population in the high school community that's always onboarding staff, right, so we're always getting new staff coming in the building, is, is sort of setting the expectation about this is how we support students, and this is what we value, and our expectation of every employee is that you're going to support students in expressing themselves and, and being comfortable in expressing themselves, like, is that, is that kind of value expectation set at the point of, of, of staff onboarding into, into the high school?
It is for the folks who we hire who start with us in the beginning of the school year, when we have the new teacher orientation the first day. After that, it's done less explicitly, we're working on trying to increase even our sub-plans that have specific language in it around support and things that, that we think all, everybody who comes in this building is gonna interact with students should know, and that's definitely one of them. So, it's one of the things that, it's a reminder that we're gonna improve on, the message is clearly given in the beginning. And then it is when new adults join us mid-year, at any time, but it's, it's almost often done more one-on-one than, and a lot of it, all of the department heads are very well aware of this, so during their department meetings, and we have a lot of veteran teachers, even though we have a significant number of new folks in the building. So, there's things like that that are easily, that are easily transmitted and communicated to new folks.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Thank you for your time.
All right.
And thank you for all you do for the school here.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you.
What's that, I'm sorry? Yeah, I think it may be a bit before Mr. Sharon's available, so I think we should just, gotta work through some.
I'm hoping we're gonna get to this document that was shared with us in relationship to this issue, that came, you know, came via board docs, that looked at the LGBTQ plus initiatives and the, and ARMS.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll get back to the ARMS part later with, when Principal Sharon arrives. And I'll, can we, can we get that up on the screen? And I'll, I'll get to Jennifer, who drafted this.
Sure, thanks. So, I drafted a statement that, supporting LGBTQ students, that I'm hoping that the school committee can review and, and vote on tonight. So, um, I, as we all know, we don't have to tell you guys, but since May twelfth, when Dr. Morris notified the school committees and the school community that he was taking medical leave effective immediately, our priority, the regional school committee's priority, has been appointing an acting superintendent. And we needed to do this promptly, and it's something that only we could have done, that only we could do, so that's been our priority. Now that our acting superintendent is appointed and has contract signed, in my opinion, our need, our priority now needs to be assuring our students and the community that we support all students, particularly LGBTQ plus students, in being their full and authentic selves, and that we will do whatever we can do to prevent discrimination and harm. And I think that doing this is more important than anything else on our agenda tonight. It's more important than talking about our own policies and get, or getting an update on the track and field project. So, I appreciate that the chair made this the first agenda item. So, I drafted a statement, and I'm open to suggestions for how it can be made better or stronger, and it's being displayed now, right? Yes. Is it okay if I just read it?
Yep.
Okay. Statement in support of LGBTQ plus students. The Emmerich Palom Regional School Committee believes that every student is entitled to a safe, welcoming, and nurturing school environment where they can be their full and authentic selves, including all lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer slash questioning LGBTQ plus students. We know that our LGBTQ plus students face unique challenges, particularly if they also identify as BIPOC, Black, Indigenous, or people of color. We believe that everyone deserves to live their life authentically and without fear of discrimination or harm. In addition, we recognize that our LGBTQ plus students are an essential part of our diverse and vibrant school community. We value the contributions of LGBTQ plus students to our community and appreciate the unique perspectives and experiences that they bring. State and federal laws make it clear that Massachusetts schools are prohibited from discriminating against LGBTQ plus students, and we believe that regardless of such laws, providing unconditional support for our LGBTQ plus students is simply and obviously the right thing to do. Despite recent anti-trans allegations, we remain unwavering in our commitment to embrace, support, and celebrate LGBTQ plus students. We are deeply sorry for the pain and harm some individuals, families, and other members of our community have experienced recently, and we know that our words alone are not enough. That is why we are committed to taking the concrete actions available within our purview to ensure that such harm does not continue and is never repeated. Our diversity is what makes our school community great. Our LGBTQ plus students and staff are an integral part of that community, and we unequivocally support all individuals in being their full and authentic selves.
Open up discussion, uh, go ahead, Allison.
So, first, thank you, Jennifer, I really appreciate that you took the time to, to draft this. And I, I think it really encompasses a lot of, of what I would want to, so I say, and so I support this. I have two, I hope, minor suggestions for tweaks, where, there was two spots where you talk about being parts of our community, and I'm wondering if we could change that to members of our community, 'cause they're not pieces, they're people. So, I thi, I'm trying to find the spot. So, in addition, we recognize that our LGBTQ plus students are essential members of our diverse and vibrant school community. And then, in the last sentence, our LGBTQ plus students and staff are integral members of that community. Otherwise, I think it's great, thank you.
And, and I also want to thank you for drafting this, like, this is very, this is an important step, I'll say. The, uh, the, the two things I would sort of add is the, uh, so there's two letters missing? We're missing intersex and asexual folks? So, I, and, and I only bring that up because I had a discussion with, with a queer elder this weekend who explained to me the importance of adding letters and adding to community, so I don't want to get yelled at after this. But, um, and then the other thing is, like, like, I, I love that we're, we're doing this. I, I just don't want to amish this, like, we, we, here in Amish, that, that's my own personal phrase. I don't, I don't want to, like, say beautiful words and then not take, like, meaningful action. So, so not only should we have this, but we should keep this in the forefront of our mind in everything that we do going forward, right? Because these issues, like, intersect a lot of issues that we have in our schools, right, like, so, yeah, that's my two and a half cents. Uh, Irv, and then Peter?
Just piggybacking on what you're saying, I'm, I'm assuming that this is one of those first steps that we, as a committee, should do. There needs to be other concrete steps that this committee does in relationship to this pa, this issue, the incidents that occurred, et cetera. And these steps cannot just stop, stop with this letter, it's a really great starting point, and only a starting point. You know, and at some other point, I think I will be making recommendations to, for the committee to go forward with other areas of activities within our purview in terms of looking into these incidents and working to make sure that these things do not occur again. I mean, my, my moral compass does not allow me to say, "I didn't know." What it allows me to say is, "I should have known." And that I didn't know meant that there, there were some failures within the feedback system that was in place or not in place for us to know.
Peter?
Yeah, I mean, all echo a lot of what, of what has been said, I mean, thank you very much for, for, for writing this up. You know, I've taken a couple of stabs at just expressing my own thoughts and feelings on this, which, you know, as you mentioned, has been difficult with the procedures that we had to follow with the acting superintendent task appointment that we had focus on, and, you know, like, the biggest themes that keep coming back to me in terms of values are, are tolerance and, and love, and that, and kindness, and the, you know, we'd like, we'd like to think that people can act from a place of love, but our, our expectation, at least for members of the school community and students and staff, is, is tolerance and, and kindness. And, and I think that comes through really well here. I, you know, it's, maybe to put a, a fine point on that, one, one suggestion is, so in the section of, "We believe that regardless of such laws, providing unconditional support for our LGBTQ plus students is simply and obviously the right thing to do," so I really like that idea, because it, it, it frames that this is an expression of, of our values and not just something that we're doing procedurally according to regulatory requirement. Maybe adding to that, and, and is the expectation that we, that our committee has of, of all members of, of our school community. Something, something like that, in, in which we are both declaring the value and saying, in our role as school committee, this is something that is, you know, we, in our oversight authority, we, we have. In terms of the, you know, the, the lettering, it's, it's, it's an interesting question. I, you know, there's, there's a couple of advocacy websites that say it in different ways, so I don't, I couldn't find, like, a standard. I, I did like one phrase that I, I read about, that it, so it just goes through every letter, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, non-binary, and then this is the last phrase I really liked, "Or have a gender identity or sexual orientation that letters and words cannot yet fully describe." Which I thought was, it, it, it was a nice way to acknowledge that, you know, twenty years from now, it would be pretty surprising if it was the same exact, you know, acronym and awareness as well, and so that, and it really sort of puts the onus on us that this, even, even if, even when we follow up actions with words, you know, which I feel like everyone here is committed to doing, it's, it's not a one-stop thing, it's not, we're just gonna check the box and we're, and we're done. This is always a continuous process of awareness. And, yeah, and, and I really like the part about, we know that our words, I just lost it on the window.
Words alone are not enough?
Yes, exactly. And the, and, you know, and, and the, the, the sense of, like, of moving immediately forward with action, you know, there's, there's, I think there's this tension point of frustration between the formal Title IX investigations, and then what can we do to review and support students now? So, obviously, there are, you know, there are formal processes beyond our control of Title IX, right? And, and we have to wait until those finish, and, you know, if, to, to the degree that it's in our purview, like, like mentioned in the letter, you know, we will, we'll have that information, and then it will be our, our duty to act on that information as, as we determine. But, you know, but especially, you know, as, given the estimate of August that we heard a little, little bit ago, it doesn't mean that we have to wait until August to start specifically talking about actionable items, and, you know, and to, not to amish it, like, as, as Ben, so that's why I really like that, that Talib kicked us off here, we're talking about very specific things. And I think ultimately, that's, that's what we ought to hone our attention to, is, is practical, pragmatic changes in terms of, you know, what, how, how staff expectations and student expectations are set at the schools, et cetera. But anyway, thank, yeah, thank you very much for putting this together.
Anyone else? Irv, go ahead.
You know, I, I think at the appropriate time, we will be, we should be discussing other things outside of the purview of a Title IX, because there are things that we should be examining that are not, that are not specifically Title IX target. And we need to look at those things, and I won't go into them now, but I have a whole list that I would like for this committee to examine. The other thing, Peter, this is only a gentle reminder from a person like me, tolerance, I hate to word tolerance, all right? Because I don't want to be tolerated, whether I can tolerate, you know, but people, as a person, I don't want to be tolerated. I want to be accepted.
Anyone else? Uh, Peter?
I mean, I, I hope I didn't give you the wrong impression, Irv.
No, you didn't.
These, these words don't have, you know, language is fluid and expressive and, you know. I just, I'm just, I'm just speaking from the heart. I mean, the reason why I have a bumper sticker on my car that says tolerance isn't because I don't accept people, it's because, it's because of what that value means to me, you know, but I, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
I just, just understand, it's not, it was, it's just a point of information not only for you,
Sure.
but for other people in terms of how a person of my color hears that. So, when I heard that, it struck me in a different way, and so I needed you to hear that from me, how it hit me.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's like a couple alphabet soups in here, and I think that everyone in those groups does not like the phrase tolerant. But, um, the, the one thing that, that I just want to keep in mind here is that I'm not entirely sure that there's like a twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old kid at the middle school that this is gonna comfort, but I like the idea that we have, like, a point to motivate us to do something that will comfort that kid, so.
So, I thank you for all the input, I really appreciate it. So, I'm gonna accept most, most of the input I heard, so I'm gonna, Allison's suggestion to change essential part to essential members, and all of the grammar that goes along with that. I like the idea of adding that intersex and asexual, so changing from LGBTQ plus to LGBTQIA+ throughout. And I think the plus addresses, that, that plus does a lot, has a big responsibility of including everyone on the spectrum, everyone that, that, one of those letters doesn't include, which is, I think, what Peter was alluding to with the rest of that description. And then, I liked Peter's suggestion of adding in that third paragraph, as part of the third, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just gonna read this, 'cause we don't, we don't, we're not gonna, I don't, I don't think we have the ability to edit it on the spot, but, "In that second sentence, in the third paragraph, and we believe that regardless of such laws, providing unconditional support for our LGBTQIA+ students is simply and obviously the right thing to do, and is the expectation we have of all members of our school community." I like that add as well. So, I move that we approve this statement as amended.
Second?
All right, um, oh, we don't have to do the roll call thing, this is awesome. All in favor? It looks unanimous, but I'll ask all opposed? Zero. The motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Do I have a, a bit of an update? I just, I just got a text from Principal Sharon. He's not gonna be able to join us tonight. What I will share with you, and we got attached to the agenda, is this roster of, I'm sorry, should speak into the mic. This roster that, that the middle school has done over the last couple of years as far as active steps that they're taking within the school. Be a lot better if you were able to take us through this and, and share with us a little bit more about what some of these things are and exactly how they have been manifest in the, in the school. But I think he, he couldn't make it to this evening. He was hoping to, but he just couldn't. But I will, if you would like, I will ask him to come to your next meeting and, and kind of take us through this a little more detail and, and share that with you if that's, if it can be an agreement.
Ben?
Allison, and then Irv.
Just, just a point, um, we, this, uh, this agenda item was just added on Friday. So, um, I appreciate Mr. Sadiq being, Talab being able to join us and understand that schedules might not have accommodated Diego being able to join us. But I also want to ask the question, Doug, regarding counselors at the middle school. I believe it was in an update that Mike had sent on the 11th of May. But could you confirm, because we hear comments from the community and parents about whether there are even counselors working in the middle school right now? But I believe the answer is yes, and if you could confirm that.
The answer is yes, there are counselors working in middle school. So, uh, so one of the things, actually before the meeting started, Mr. Rose asked me about DM students at the, at the middle school. That, that person that's serving in that role this year was originally brought in to do what they call Tier Two counseling, so a second level or a higher level of need. They felt that switching that role to being a, a dean was a, was a better fit in, in the circumstances. But obviously with, with staff being put on administrative leave, there's some additional need for, for counseling services. And so the dean serving that role to some extent, there's some, there's some retired staff we brought back to help out as far as providing those counseling supports. And then I think we're also working, and I'm gonna look to Ms. Fleming in the back to see if she can affirm this. But I think the high school's gonna help and share some staff as well to help us out over the last few weeks of school. You know, a lot of eighth graders are worrying a lot about what it's like to go to the high school. So having a high school person come over and share a little of, it's not, it's a bigger building, but it's, it's not too bad. And you'll be okay, we'll support you. That's important messaging. So there are counselors and, and support that we're trying to bring in and, and bring to bear in the circumstance that we have some staff out. So we're trying to, trying to do the best we can to, to provide that support.
Thank you. Go ahead, Irv.
Uh, I would really invite the committee to go through this list that's up here. Because when you go through it, for myself, when I went through it, those processes, procedures that were in place at the middle school for the 2021 and 2022 school year, and then the 22 school year, 23 school year, I was left wondering, how, 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 how do we miss this? What, what broke down? Something broke down. And that's what I want us to look at. Where did the breakdowns occur? Because this is pretty complete in terms of what's there, the processes that are there. But yet, it broke down, some, something broke down in terms of why we didn't know about this. We should have known about it, given this.
Think we'll hear some of that when Diego's available and also with the investigation.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that there's, you know, and I think part of why the, the community's been as upset as they have is because, you know, there are, are certainly a broad spectrum of things here that are listed out and, and efforts have been made and, and and yet it seems as though we've not met the needs of the students. And so we're, we're definitely trying to, to find that out, what the cause of that is. And some of that's, you know, a sort of formal investigation, and some of that's, you know, one of the other things we missed. And I think it's, you know, it's, it's the, the kind of process we go through kind of regardless of, of what kind of circumstance we run into. But if, you know, something unfortunate happens in, in our schools, you know, we, we want to have and research those, those problems and see what it was. Were there things we, like you say, were there things we missed? Were there things we didn't attend to? Were there things we thought were all in good order and were not? And what is it that we need to do to, to put them in order? So I think that's definitely, uh, I know I'm motivated to, to get answers to those questions. I think, you know, if, if you ask our staff, they're motivated to find the answers to that and, and take action because, you know, definitely people have reached out to me and, and, you know, shared similar concerns and wanna, wanna take actionable steps if possible as soon as we can.
It's, 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 to me, it's almost one of these classic things where you write something down, you put it on paper, put it on a shelf, and then forget about it.
Could be. Go ahead, Peter.
Um, so a couple of weeks ago, or maybe two or three weeks ago, I don't know. We, there was an update from the superintendent about the, an engagement with the Stonewall Center. So Stonewall Center is LGBTQIA plus resource center at UMS. And that, that they were going to be working with us in some capacity to support staff and our students. I don't know if you have a status update on that or whether Diego or Talab might, might know or what the, just what the details on that might be.
I do not, but I'm happy to get back to you on that and, and see if we took more actions other than an initial phone call. We may have said, hey, we'd like to talk to you about this, and then things evolved as they did. And so we may not have had that follow-up. So I will definitely follow up on that and, and try to get back to you and, and get some answers to you regarding that.
Thank you.
And before we move on to the next agenda item, I want to return to public comment just in case there's anyone who came after we had the in-person public comment that wishes to make a public comment. You can come forward and be recognized.
Thanks for the opportunity. Hi, I'm Jenna Schwartz. A lot of my public comment has actually been touched on already tonight, which I appreciate and very much appreciate some of the comments I've heard here tonight as far as looking at, you know, what, what the committee should have known, didn't know, especially given, you know, all that's on paper and, and also acknowledging that the statement is a, is a starting point. I'm really appreciating how much I'm hearing that here, too. So I'm gonna read it anyway, even though some of this may seem a little bit redundant, but I think it's just important to keep saying these things. So I want to thank you for the statement in support of LGBTQIA plus students at ARPS. It's heartening to read the commitment to the physical, emotional, and spiritual safety of every student in our school district. I also appreciate the acknowledgement that words are not enough and that actions to safeguard against future harm must be identified, implemented, and closely monitored and upheld. The pain and harm you apologize for in the statement of support have already occurred. And they occurred while this school committee was charged with overseeing the superintendent and assistant superintendent to make sure they were properly doing their jobs. First and foremost, ensuring an environment where every child can thrive and learn. What are your plans for holding the superintendent and the acting superintendent accountable in addition to waiting for the Title IX results? I hope that the school committee continues to recognize and act on the weight of this moment. For the kids who suffered these abuses, healing will not happen quickly or because of a series of one-time trainings in the schools. Rather, it will be greatly aided by hearing from the adults who did not heed complaints sooner and allowed so much time to elapse without stepping in. What actions will the school committee be taking to address the students and families who already experienced harm? How will you speak to the duration of time over which these harms took place? And what repairs do you plan to implement? How do you plan to account for the breaches in leadership that allowed for such hires to occur in the first place? Enabling individuals to proselytize and impose their personal religious agendas onto some of our most vulnerable and marginalized young people? And finally, what safeguards will you put in place to assure that leadership swiftly and appropriately handles any future complaints or allegations of this nature? How will you communicate these to the public in an effort to restore trust? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, oh.
I'm, I'm Jay Schwartz. And first off, I just want to say thank you so much to Jennifer for the statement you wrote, to Ben for your acknowledgement of the amersing of things. And I will show up for anybody who's being amersed. And Irv, for your acknowledgement of this being a first step and also of the word tolerance. We tolerate gnats and mosquitoes, humans should be embraced. So I, I don't want to make this about me. Believe it or not, I know you've all seen me talk a lot. And I, I'm not someone who likes to be in the center of things in that way, putting my own story out there. That's how important this is to me. It makes my skin crawl. It's probably because of the trauma that I endured as a kid in similar situations. But the reason I keep bringing it up is because I'm thinking about these children and their experiences. And although we're all individuals, certain things hit the same. And, um, I just want to say that when you're thinking about next steps, please consider that what those children have endured, they, they may very well, and I hope, they heal and go on to have long, fulfilling, happy lives where they feel free and safe to be themselves. But what happened to them is going to stay in them. And it's going to live in them. And it is going to be reactivated over and over again because, to be quite honest, I know we've come a long way, but we also haven't come anywhere. So much has changed for the better, and yet I'm seeing replays of things that I experienced in the 1980s. We see the same thing with race issues. We see repetitions of these behaviors. And whenever there's a big push forward, there's always a backlash. And so these children will someday be 30, 40, 50, and this is going to be inside of them. So I would just like you to please keep that in mind as you're deciding your next steps. Think about how that is going to impact them and stay with them. And if you can put yourself in their situation in whatever way works for you, imagining it however you want, something that someone, we all have things people have said to us, but imagine it's happening constantly, some of you don't need to imagine. Yeah, just please consider that. Please consider that this is a one-off, maybe for some people in the community, you know? An event that it's just gonna get moved on from. It's not gonna get moved on from for them. It won't be an everyday thing they think about. But it is gonna come up again and again as long as they are alive. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks who wish to come up and make public comment? Whoops. Guess that's the answer. So we'll move on to the next item, which is protocols for sharing confidential information. Is that, uh? Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I asked for this to be on the agenda. I don't have much of an intro other than, so, no, I mean, really. So, uh, last, was it last Friday? Or the Friday before? I, I can't remember now. At like quarter of five, Ben shared a confidential update with us. And then within a couple hours, it seems, unless I'm reading the timestamps wrong, the, that information showed up on a, a website citing two independent sources. So, um, it, so I, I have no desire to like do any kind of a Q and A or, or investigation over that. But I thought it was, is an opportunity to talk about, you know, what, what is confidential information that, that, that a district superintendent would want to, or a school committee chair would want to share with our committee? And then what's our responsibility with that information? As far as I know, there's no like school committee confidential information police that's ever gonna, you know, police this kind of stuff. So it's really up to us in terms of how we understand the information. And, um, you know, I mean, we, superintendent, for different reasons over the years, has shared confidential information usually just before a, a public statement about something or, or if there's some serious security issue in the school. But I didn't know if, um, we can maybe just talk about what are those, what are the common cases? And then, and what, what's the desire? And then why, why, why would we want to have the school committee know something prior to the public knowing it, even if it's a short while? So Doug, if you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think the, the, the few things to keep in mind is sort of, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to sit on confidential information, I think. I mean, just as human beings, it's difficult to sit on confidential information. And, and, and so I think the, the thing I would suggest is, is for folks to keep in mind, obviously it specifically relates to, to students. We want to definitely keep them out of, out of the public realm as far as that kind of stuff is concerned. And I think with adults, you also want to think about the ramifications of that information being shared. So is this going to be, um, you know, is it information that could have a damaging effect on someone, you know, personally, professionally, emotionally, et cetera? All things I think people should consider. And, and, um, and, you know, does it, does it fall into a circumstance where, uh, there are certain protections guaranteed? So, you know, there have been in the past, I will share this, there have been in the past circumstances where a school committee has been less disciplined about its management of information that's somewhat personal, private, or confidential in nature, and it has cost the district significantly. So that's the other thing to keep in mind is that there are financial consequences sometimes to, to releasing information. Because, you know, people do have, you know, the, the right to, you know, you know, innocent until proven guilty or to, you know, sort of make appropriate defense of their actions. They may be indefensible, but nonetheless, they have the right to make those, those statements. And so I think that that's, those are the kind of considerations you want to keep in mind as far as when, when thinking about, you know, do I share, do I not share? Should I share? When should I share? Those are the kinds of things I think about. It's like, what, what type of harm can I do? Whether it be to individuals, to the district, um, you know? And certainly as long as there's not a quorum of you guys can sort of discuss at length more individually. Because sometimes it's necessary, you know, I've served in roles like yours in other, in other ways. And, and there are times you need to talk about it. And you've got to find the right environment and circumstance to do that. And sometimes it's, you need to talk with someone on your committee because they understand the nuance of what you're sort of grappling with. And what are the things we need to be prepared to do? And that's part of why confidential information gets given to you. So you can start thinking about, well, what actionable steps do we, we need to take next? But you do want to be conscientious of, of how much is public or not public. But like I said, if you're not in a quorum, you can have those conversations. And I think it's healthy in a lot of ways because you need to have that, you know, often need to have those conversations.
And it, so what I, what I'll add to the conversation is, uh, is probably relevant here is, is number one, like my thoughts in terms of the, the timeline when I informed everybody here. So I probably wouldn't have informed the entire committee at 4:44 on a Friday, I think, whatever time it was. I think me and Doug probably experienced this a little bit different, being in the buildings every day is the fact that, um, so the confidential information that was shared was probably known, it was definitely known to people in the building. So I kind of wanted to get us ahead of that so that we'd be prepared for what was gonna come, so. But also in, in terms of like just sharing that with, with us as a committee, I, I think it's right for us to know, like, like that incident, something was getting ready to come our way, right? Like, we shouldn't all be caught off guard in that situation. So that's, that's kind of my thinking. And also, if we're telling the public that we're gonna be more transparent with them, I think it's important for us to be transparent with each other, right? So, that's my, two, let's see, I was two and a half cents before, so this is my 3.5 cents now. Oh, go ahead, Margaret, I'm sorry.
I guess personally, I sort of have always felt like anything that comes to me as a member of the school committee is confidential. You know, and why would I be talking to somebody about something that, that's come to me as a member of the school committee? Somebody who's not on the school committee? Somebody who's not on the school committee? And the other thing I think you need to think about is what if it was you? What if it was me and something was going on and confidential information had been shared? And somebody had put it out there, you know? So I guess that's how I look at it myself.
Allison?
Thank you for the explanations that you gave Doug. Because I was, I think, you know, it's a tricky balance. Because I share your sentiment, Margaret, of... And it's not just information that comes to us. It's marked confidential information. Sometimes families, parents, teachers reach out to us, yes, in our public email address, which is a public record. But it's information that they're trusting us with and not necessarily putting stamping, you know, like lawyers do. This is, you know, attorney-client privilege. And yet they're trusting us to hold their story and treat it with the respect that they're asking us to treat it. And not necessarily to broadcast it in public and to share the details of that. And it may not even be information that legally is required to be confidential. It may be just personal information that they want to share and don't want the rest of the community to know. It could be a controversial opinion. But it could be also an experience that they've had in the school or that their student has had in the school. And so I think, you know, how we treat and how we share confidential information is a signal to the community about how... So transparency is important, but also knowing when not to be transparent and share everything is also really important for maintaining, holding and maintaining and earning the trust of our community. So, you know, I don't think that there's any sort of hard, fast rule. I think there's a vast gray area in there for us. And one of the things that I think about, and Doug, maybe you can elaborate a little bit, but my understanding is personnel information, you mentioned student information. So any communication that we receive about a student, including stories about bullying, we cannot talk about the students involved or their experiences. Is that also the case with personnel? That a person, you know, to what extent are personnel matters? Things that we hear, we hear grievances, for example, and in executive session about specific actions, behaviors, incidences that have happened in the school. And my understanding is those are also confidential and not things that we can talk about or even name the people that are involved in those situations. And so I'm just asking if, you know, to what extent is personnel information also to be treated confidentially?
A good part of it is. I mean, there's a fair amount of employees in the school district, our public employees. And so a ton of information about them is publicly knowledgeable. So how much any of us make? Perfectly fine to ask that question. Makes people uncomfortable. It's not something that, you know, sort of in our culture, that we generally sort of wave in front of people. Some do, I guess. But it is technically, you know, imminently available information can be requested. We don't generally advertise it. But at the same time, if asked for it, we do surrender that information. But things to do with, you know, disciplinary action, anything to do with, you know, personnel actions that are particular to that individual and may prove harmful to them as far as, you know, their ability to promote or get a job in someplace else or any of those. Those are all things that should stay within their personnel record. You may need to know them. A lot of grievance material is in that category. It's a level of detail about an individual that isn't public record. And so what I would suggest is if there's ever a question, ask that question. We'll confirm with council about what is or is not, you know, really sort of publicly shareable. Generally, though, if it involves, you know, discipline in any way and the specifics of discipline or, you know, personnel actions, it's generally not available for the public consumption. Other things, you know, what specific job you have, how much money you make, what's your FDE? Those are all perfectly public pieces of information.
Thank you. Anyone else want to chime in? Peter?
Yeah, just to add another angle on it. So one other type of information that's been shared with the committee confidentially over the years has been when there's a serious safety situation with the school. So if there's a lockdown, and especially if it's an evolving situation. And that's a situation that I think can be challenging to manage informationally from a school committee member perspective. Because everyone, especially if the schools are in lockdown and there's a suspected threat, but it's not confirmed. And what is the threat and where is it? Like, everybody really wants to know that information ASAP. But the reason why the district isn't just tweeting it out in lifetime is because safety is obviously the number one paramount thing. Not, you know, not... And that everything has to be looked at through that lens and coordinated with public safety officials. So that's the, in terms of like, you know, what kind of information might come to us in the future that's confidential? That would be, I think, a good example for us to think about. And it's hard. It's hard to, I mean, I remember some of these situations, you know, getting an update in the morning, going for a walk around the neighborhood for 15 minutes, coming back and having a substantive update that we're asked not to share immediately because of safety concerns and being stopped along the walk by three or four people saying, "You're on school committee, you know, what do you know?" And you just can't because you have to adhere to that. So that's just not, that's another, wasn't in this case, but you know, that's another certainly common type of confidential information.
Anyone else? Right, so with the permission of the committee here, I see two folks who sat through like a 97-hour meeting to speak. So now they're back today. Does anyone, does anyone object to moving item D to C and C to D? All right.
Want me to queue this up real quick?
Yes, please.
It'll be a very short queue. So our amazing ARPS librarians took it upon themselves to look at this policy. And I'll let them, you know, talk about the origins of it and their work. But, you know, most policies either come from our committee or it's just part of our regular view. And this was really proactive, given, you know, what I think everybody understands is has become a tension point across the country in terms of materials in schools and how parents and staff and sometimes governments are objecting to that information. And so this is obviously something we wanted to get ahead of. So it was super fantastic to get the message from Ella, our high school librarian, and that she had worked with her colleagues and proposed not just an update to our own policy, but also the procedures that support that. So she came to our policy subcommittee meeting a couple times, answered questions and went back and forth. And so I'm just really excited that they took the initiative and that they're taking time out of their personal lives to come and share their work with us. So please take it away. And thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, Peter. So just for the record, I'm Ella Stocker. This is Susan Wells, who's our wonderful Wildwood librarian. So we just want to talk a little bit about the goals of why we wanted to do these revisions and then share with you some statistics and also just sort of give you an overview of what's changed in this policy. So I'll kick us off with some of our goals. So the goal of revising this policy, which was last updated, I think, in like 1988, if I'm remembering correctly, is to provide stronger protections for instructional materials, both in our libraries but also in our classrooms all across the district. These protections ensure that our students' intellectual freedom rights are protected. In the face of rising attacks on school library collections, librarians, and public school curricula, there has never been a more critical time to put into the record a defense of our students' constitutional rights to their freedom of expression, their freedom of information, and their freedom of access. Or to provide clear guidelines for how challenges to materials will be addressed. And we'll give you some statistics to back up why this time is so critical. So according to the American Library Association's Office of Intellectual Freedom, in 2020, so just three years ago, 223 individual titles were challenged. That's a pretty average year from the ALA. In 2022, just two years later, there were 2,571 unique titles that were challenged. The OIF reported 1,269 overall attempts, though some of those attempts have multiple books, to ban or restrict books, which is nearly doubling that of 2021, 729, and almost tenfold that of 2020, where there were only 156 overall attempts. Many of these attempts involved multiple books being sort of done all at once. And 90% of them were generated by lists that were sort of organized by outside groups, not organically coming up through parents or concerned members of the community. Lest you think this is a problem that's only happening in Florida. In Massachusetts, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners reported a quote-unquote "dramatic surge" in book challenges and disruptions to library programming, both formal and informal, quadrupling from 2021 to 2022, going from 20 to 78. The Massachusetts School Library Association, of which I'm a board member in full disclosure, was notified of zero book challenges in 2020 to 2021, two last year, and then 22 this year so far. It is important to note that the vast majority of these challenges, both nationally and here in Massachusetts, have been targeted at books written by members of marginalized communities. Overwhelmingly, these challenges have specifically sought to remove books about racism, social justice, and both BIPOC and LGBTQ identities and experiences. So I think we've set up a good sort of why this is important to do. I want to sort of give you an overview of what we've changed in the existing policy, which was not terrible, it just needed a lot of updates. So the current policy, as it stands now, names specific positions and community groups that no longer are no longer active in our community. It references a defunct challenge form that we couldn't even find and employed a confusing, multi-tiered process for reviewing titles. And it didn't quite make it clear who was responsible for the decision on any title, who could challenge a title, or the process for following a review of a title. So the revised policy removes that two-tiered system that dealt with textbooks and whole-class reads differently from individual titles or small group books differently. So all reconsiderations now will follow the same process. It also introduces a reconsideration form much earlier in the process, which helps the district to track formal challenges much earlier on. And also ensures that anyone involved in the review process, whether it's a principal all the way up to an actual review committee, is using the same information and the same sort of record of request for reconsideration. The form also asks those requesting that information to specify how the material violates the district's stated mission. It also adds language to clarify that requests for reconsideration may only come from members of our school community, including residents of the four-member towns at the regional level, and then staff, students, and obviously families of students. It also outlines a specific order for review of instructional materials under reconsideration, which prevents a title from being removed without due process. And also updates the titles of staff involved in the reconsideration process to reflect current positions, student government groups, and affinity groups within the district. And finally, it clarifies who will serve on a final review committee and how those folks are selected or appointed. So that is sort of the overview of what we've been doing. And I think now we'll just open it up to questions or discussion amongst yourselves.
I'll just speak for a minute.
Yeah, please do.
The timeline we took to do this. So we met together as a school librarian group, elementary, middle, and high school. And we looked at the policy. We tried with Debbie West-Merlin. Thankfully, she's around because she knows a lot. And she couldn't find a lot of the things attached, the challenge form and whatnot. So we recruited help from the Massachusetts School Library Association. And there is an expert on challenges. And they're getting a lot of work these days. So they kind of helped us with the language as well. So it took from the fall until the winter, when you first started meeting with people in the subcommittee. So many meetings, and we've all looked at it. And I think it is a good policy. It is a good revision because it updated so much of the language. And there is a clear and very transparent process that... And one thing I would like to mention is we did, right away, put the vision statement in the policy. Because I think for all of us to continually be going back to the vision statement and someone who has an issue with something they would like to reconsider or they'd like to challenge something, for our mission to be front and foremost in their mind before they even continue down that road.
Perfect. So we'll open it up to questions from the committee or comments. Sarah Bass?
I don't have a question because I was part of the subcommittee that got to hear all of this. I just want to say thank you again, super publicly, for all of the work and effort you put into this. I mean, full support of this revision. I think the form that has been designed is really clear, really easy to understand. And the process that someone would have to go to if there was instructional material they didn't want to be available, it's very clear on how it would have to go. And I also love the piece that you have to be part of this community in some way to be able to challenge some sort of material. I think, given our mission statement, plus the one we had, you know, exactly what we were talking about earlier tonight, I think those are all really important pieces of how we can be and invite people to be their most authentic selves. And so this is a good way of, you know, reading is such a good way for everybody, and especially children, to see themselves in other places, right? And know that there are other people like them, and however they feel about themselves, existing somewhere else. So, you know, I just thank you so much for doing this.
And in that vein, just to add on that comment, you're saying to see oneself is very important, but also to learn about others.
Yes, yes.
Very important.
Definitely. And I like the idea of kind of setting a roadblock for outside groups like that. I'm more concerned about those folks coming here trying to ban books than I am amherst residents. It's kind of like in our book and plow. That's kind of our vibe here. So I didn't see who went up first. We'll go Irvan and Allison.
I really appreciate your work. I am a former middle school librarian. I was trained as a middle school librarian in my earlier iteration of my life. Libraries like this and the middle school libraries are places that I feel incredibly comfortable in, but also know the value that it brings to a school community. And doing this kind of work is incredibly good. So I really congratulate you for doing that, and I thank you.
Allison, then Margaret?
I have several, so, questions, but thank you is the first one. But because it's actually about the wording of the policy and then a couple comments, questions on the form, too. I'm glad you presented because I, in reading the policy, I didn't actually catch that it was limited to people in our community. So I'm just wondering if we should explicitly say we do not accept challenges from people outside of our... I noticed that there's a sentence that says, "Individuals or groups that are members of our student body or community may wish to have..." But it doesn't actually explicitly say we will not accept challenges from outside of our community. And I think if that's a really important piece to us, that we should say that explicitly. I don't, I'll leave it up to the policy subcommittee to figure out how to word that. I also noticed that the... I was a little confused because the form said one thing, and it said to submit it to the superintendent, but the policy says to submit it to the building principal. So I just feel like there's some cleanup to align the two things more closely.
Would you like us to just answer that right now?
Yeah.
Because we did talk about that in the policy subcommittee. So we made the decision to have it go to the superintendent's office because A, it would alert the superintendent's office that there was a potential challenge brewing at one of the schools. And also would immediately sort of set up that tracked policy, where then the superintendent and the principal would be able to pass that along to the principal directly. We also foresaw an instance where multiple schools might be receiving a challenge for the same book because we certainly have overlapping populations in our schools. We did discuss that at length. And I think it just, it seemed to us to make sense to have it go through the superintendent's office. Obviously, if the rest of the school committee feels differently, we can figure out something else. But that was our reasoning.
Thank you. So then I might suggest that on item number two of the procedure, that it state that, that it will be submitted to the superintendent who will track and then share it with the building principal or affected building principals. Because it just, I found it confusing. And I'm sure others may be like, wait, which way? So then that explains then the appeal to the superintendent there. On the committee, the review committee, I just, I noticed that the prior policy talked about school councils. It's my understanding that school councils do exist. They're legally required. So I just was curious as to why we changed it to the PGOs as opposed to the school council? Because my understanding is the school councils are elected bodies within the school community.
So I'm actually the advisor of the high school school council, so I can speak to that, which is the Student Representative Council, or Representative Committee. And in our high school, they're not elected. We just, that was the decision of the student body, was just to anyone can serve on it who chooses to. The only positions that are elected are the representatives who come to school committee. But I'm not sure, I believe the parent gardening organization is also listed in the previous... But, I'm not sure, I believe the parent guardian organization is also listed in the previous policy, if I'm not mistaken. I can't remember off the top of my head, but...
So, I wasn't referencing student councils. There's, there's a parent count, yeah. I don't know what they're called. Yes.
I mean, I think that's a good... I mean, yeah, I think that would be a fair change, the school governance council. I don't know that I was aware of the school governance council as much as I am now. If they just redid the policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, same.
The vision or whatever it was called, yeah.
Yes, I think that we wanted to swap, just having a parent representative, I think that's a...
Yeah.
Maybe that could be, you know, instead of specifying which organization it comes from, maybe a parent from an appropriate school, or like a family member would maybe be more like...
Yeah, it could be a parent, but a...
A guardian?
Guardian, yeah.
I have, also, on the Alana, I think it would be helpful to spell out what Alana is and how that representative will be appointed, similar to all the others. That's it on the policy. I'll let others talk before I come back with my questions on the form.
Was it process-related?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to recall, on school governance councils, haven't served on one before. So, it's not elected. It's, I think it's a volunteer board that principals ask people to contribute to, usually when they're making up the school improvement plan. At least, that's what I did at Crocker. So, I think it's going to be more or less the same kind of population, right? It's going to be mostly parent guardians. So, the suggestion that we, someone was making 30 seconds ago sounds...
Yeah, just any representative. I don't think it has to be PGO or school governance council. We should just maybe take that language out, because then it frees it up.
I do also think we just hadn't even thought about this, but I do think removing the word "parent" and making it either caregiver or guardian, I think is a much more inclusive term, so.
Margaret?
Well, I don't know, this is maybe kind of a funny thing to say. This is not a suggestion or a comment. I want to say thank you, because right now, I'm listening to 1984 audiobook. I am reading a novel about a group of women in the Appalachians trying to start, they call it the Backpack Library, where they're trying to get books out to the people in the outlined areas. And I read a very disturbing article this morning in the Washington Post about how limiting some private schools are in what they allow their students to have. So, I think it's terrific that you're doing this. I also think that you've taken on this yourselves, and bringing it forward is a piece of transparency that we're all looking for. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
And, yep, Allison?
So, on the form, the question, "Have you read or reviewed this material in its entirety?" And then it was just yes or no. And I just thought, if somebody had read it partially, they wouldn't know what to answer. So, I just wondered if you just delete "in its entirety" and change the choice option so it says "yes" in its entirety, "yes" partly, or "no," just to give people that option to... You probably only care about the people that read it in its entirety, but at least it gives the people a way to answer honestly what they did. And then, on the bottom, again, sort of just thinking about confusion, it says, "Upon receipt of this by the superintendent's office, the review committee shall be notified."
Thank you for catching that, because that is from a prior, prior to some conversation with the policy subcommittee. I don't think that particular line got updated. So, I think what that probably should say is, "Upon receipt from the superintendent's office, this form will be shared with that building principal, and within three weeks of notification of this request." You know, you'll be informed of the decision or whatever, moving forward, so.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Good catch.
Sorry, Peter? Yeah, so I think process, procedure-wise, so there's not a rush to get this voted tonight. I think, we did discuss on the policy subcommittee, though, with Ellen, our colleagues, that it would be good to get this done this school year, and have that in place, you know, given everything that they've discussed. So, I think the changes that have been suggested, I think they're all good, but don't represent a substantive, you know, detour from the main thrust of the policy. So, I feel like for our next meeting, we should be able to bring back these updates, and then if everyone's comfortable, be able to vote on it, then. Is there anything else you wanted to add, or share?
No, just thank you so much. Yeah, this is a very important part of being a school library, is looking at your school policies and making sure that you are in alignment with them. And when we looked at this, we said, "How can we be in aligned with this? It's so out of date, there's so many things that need to be changed." So, we really appreciate the opportunity to bring this to you all and to have such a supportive response, so, yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of the time that you put into this.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure, we can take a five-minute break. So, it is 8:06. We'll take a break and reconvene at 8:11. Does that work for folks? Let's stretch my legs. Public comment policy, policy number, or letter, B-E-D-H?
Sure. Yeah, I can briefly queue this up as well. Don't want me to wait for Steve?
He'll see it.
Okay, he's good. Yeah, so, this is another one I asked her to be added. I'll try and keep the intro brief. So, at our meeting on the 16th, I believe it was, yeah, on the 16th, Ben and I chaired a joint meeting. I was the chair of Union 26, Ben the chair of Region. And we, as part of that meeting, we agreed, we didn't vote, but we all agreed to suspend our public comment policy. And we have a policy on policies, BG, that says that any action to suspend a policy must be reviewed at the next scheduled meeting. So, here we are. That's kind of the procedural need to review it. And I think there's two things that would help to talk about. One is specifically the question of going forward with our current meeting format and structure, what should we do with written comments? It doesn't come up a lot, but it's come up more than once. And so, you know, as we all discussed last meeting, you know, we have a policy not to read them, to scroll through them for... And so, you know, the question is, should we change that? There's other approaches that different committees in different towns take. I believe the Amherst Town Council posts written public comment to the meeting posting, and then does not scroll or read them. That, I think that's something that would, just my two cents, would be worthwhile to discuss, given that we're back in person. So, that's one, that's one aspect of this. You know, the other is, you know, how as a committee, do we want to work out how we handle public comment, particularly in high-pressure, high-tense situations? And, you know, it should come as a surprise to no one, when I was chairing that meeting, it was a very tense environment. We had a number of altercations, a number of disruptions, as we tried to talk about how we wanted to handle things. And it was, I mean, I'll just be very honest, it was a really difficult situation for me to manage. And I don't know if I, at the end of the day, managed it correctly. But, I mean, I'll just be, and I'll just be very honest, you know, my number-one overarching goal for that evening was, had to be first, public safety. And a number of members here had reached out to me in the lead-up to that meeting, concerned about public safety, and had we coordinated on that, and all that. And so, I knew that was also on the forefront of people's minds. And, you know, and as we were discussing it, I felt that the disruptions from the public that were making it difficult for us to have just an orderly meeting in which we were here, be able to hear each other and calling each other and go back and forth and decide what to do, was becoming more and more difficult. So, you know, and I honestly don't mean this as any kind of a personal criticism, but then when, you know, when a member then just went ahead and decided to read them, and before we had all discussed it, and at the request of to please stop, it felt like things almost were getting to a dangerous place. And that our, the lack of control over our meeting might be then spilling over into the, into the book. So, that's why I called, I suggested we call a recess, we reconvened, as everybody remembers, for five minutes, we came back, and then we informally discussed it for about five or 10 minutes, and all decided that we would proceed as we would. So, that's just something, and, you know, I don't deal with this situation often because I'm the Union 26 chair, right? So, I don't chair a lot of meetings. So, I guess I'd really just want to hear from the chairs of our other committees, and also the members who were at those meetings, you know, how we felt that all went, what could be improved in our process, and then, you know, specifically also what we want to do with public comment, written public comment going forward.
So, before we like wade too deeply into this, I just want to point out the purpose of public comment. I think, so a lot of folks, I think, are under the impression that the purpose of public comment is for the public to talk to the public. It's not. The purpose of public comment is for the public to talk to us, right? Like, that's the chance they get there. So, I think that kind of changes my perspective on a lot of these things, like the idea of scrolling through, or what we do with written public comment, right? Like, the argument as to whether or not something is an accessibility issue. I don't know how that plays in if the purpose of public comment is for the public to talk to us about issues. So, that's just the, that's the one thing I want to keep in mind here. Yep, go ahead, Jennifer. Or, no, you can go ahead, Jen.
So, just first addressing what you just said, Ben, I see the goal of public comment is for members of the public to make a comment to the school committee in a public forum. Because, as we know, people email us directly, not have, and not, and they don't want it to be a public comment, they don't want it to be displayed or shared publicly. So, I think there's a, I think it's, yes, the objective of public comment is for the public to speak to us, but they have many, they have multiple avenues to do that. One of them is to email us directly, not in a public forum. So, yes, I would agree that the objective is not for the public to have a two-way conversation with the public, but it is for members of the public to make a comment to the school committee in a public forum, to have their comment heard by members or seen by members of the public. So, I just wanted to add that. So, I think that meeting was very charged, I don't have to tell anyone here that. And I think it was unique, and hopefully uncommon, and hopefully not something that will happen with much regularity. I, you know, our public comment policy was just updated last year. I voted on it, like, I voted to approve it. I don't, if we think that, if this body thinks we might want to change it, maybe we kick it back to the policy committee to review again. I would be in favor of that. And I just wanted to say, I think it's okay for us to have diverse perspectives on what happened at that meeting, and to think differently about it, and to not necessarily come to consensus about what happened or what to do in the future. It's okay for us to not agree on everything all the time, because if we, if we as a body, were a committee that agreed on everything all the time, then we wouldn't be a body that represents diverse opinions and perspectives. So, I think the amount of tension, and by tension, I mean the tension of differing opinions, not that there's tension between committee members, I think the amount of tension is healthy in how we perceive what happened at that meeting and how things went down. And I think that's okay.
Allison?
I, I share that opinion, Jennifer, that diversity of opinion is good and healthy. And yet, I don't think, I feel very strongly that that does not apply to how we run our meetings. We, when we join this committee, when we take our oath of office, we are pledging ourselves to uphold the policies of this committee. What happened at that meeting was a flagrant violation of our own policies. And I'm not even, like, if we can talk about whether we display the, display the public comment, don't display them, read them, that's not the point. One of our core tenets of all of our policies is that the chairs run the meeting, and that we, the chair is not more important or less important than any of the members, but the role of the chair is to ensure that all of our diverse perspectives have the opportunity to be aired and heard, that we each have the opportunity to share our perspective and to voice our opinion on the matters that are in front of the committee. The only way we can do that is if we agree to some semblance of order in our meetings. If we go to, if we don't respect the role of the chair in determining how our meetings are going to be run, including how public comment is going to be run, then it is only, it is only the loudest, most aggressive, most harassing voices that will be heard. The timid, the introverts, the, those that don't want to be, join the fray, are not going to be... The timid, the introverts, the, those that don't want to be, um, uh, join the fray are not going to be heard. And so, in order to ensure that all voices are heard at this table and that we all have an equal say or the opportunity for equal say into, in our deliberations, we need to respect the role of the chair in running the meetings. If we have, if we have objections to the way a particular chair is running that meeting, then we can take that up. We can have a vote of reorganization. We can talk about the ways and the policies that we're entrusting the chair to, to uphold during our meetings. But to just decide amongst our, um, for us, for an individual member to decide that they do not want to adhere to what the chair has asked them to do and to take it upon themselves to overrule and to speak over the chair in that moment is a flagrant disregard of the policies of this committee and the way we operate. And it's frankly hijacking the opportunity for other members to weigh in on the matter. And so, I, regardless of what we decide about reading or share, or scrolling through, displaying the written public comment, I do want to be clear that if we say that it's at the discretion of the chair, that we as a committee respect that discretion of the chair. And if we don't want to leave it up to the chair and if chairs are, don't want to have that responsibility put on them, then we need to take that out and say that this is the way it is and we adhere to it. But we can't have this, depending on the size of the crowd, depending on our opinions on the particular, the opinion, uh, public comments that are, are being shared, we can't sort of have it on one meeting, we decide to read it or, and listen, and, and one, one, one other meeting, we don't. And it can't not, it has to be the decision of the committee if it's not the committee, the decision of the chair. So, I feel very strongly about this.
Uh, Peter?
So, I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate what you said too, Jennifer, and, you know, just from my, again, trying to share my experience at that meeting as honestly as I can with you, like, I, I didn't feel like you were acting maliciously or with bad intent when, when you got up and just started reading the public comment and then just, and, and ignored the request to, to please stop. You know, I, I, and maybe you, and this is just my interpretation, I, I thought you were trying to like do the best thing in the situation, you know, given the, the concern we all have about, about safety and, and whatnot. The, and, and so, the, the, the reason why I found that so troubling wasn't that we disagreed about whether the public comment should be read or not, it's that that's the way in which you chose to resolve the, the disagreement, right? Which was in stark contrast to what we did after we came back from the break, right? Which is, we, we followed Robert's Rules of Order. And, you know, to, to Allison's point about assertiveness, you know, um, and, you know, I can only speak for myself, you know, it, as soon as I started on this committee, and even though I, I have a genuine anxiety about public speaking, which might come as a surprise to some, I just decided I had to speak because I just had to get over my bad self. But not everybody feels that way. And, um, I feel like if, if we have naturally, if we have no problem being assertive, then that's, that's, it's, it's not being equitable to all the voices and I, I, you know, I, I, we would have been in a really difficult situation if somebody else on that committee that night felt equally assertive and disagreed with you and had gone up and, you know, pulled the microphone away from you, God forbid, and then, what, you know, and then what would have happened then? So, I think that's why we have Robert's Rules of Order and that we, we try and, and follow them and not, not that we're always perfect. And, and if we, if we allow our well-intentioned passions to override that, then, you know, the moment when we can take a step back, we, we, we try and acknowledge and, and correct that. Several meetings ago, I think Irv and I, um, had a similar thing about running the meeting. I think it's the first executive session for acting, the appointment of the, uh, acting superintendent. So, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not saying I'm, I'm perfect in, in, in that and that my emotions are always in check with regards to that action. But I thi- I think that's the first principle that we have to, you know, all agree that we're trying to adhere to.
Uh, Irv, go ahead.
No, the, um, it's not like either or, but there is, there is a proper procedure for doing, uh, intervening in a process like that by a committee member, and that is asking for a point of order and following Robert's Rules. Now, if Jennifer would have said point of order, we would have all then had to pay attention to what she had to say and then deal with that.
Anyone else want to weigh in here? Service?
As a person who is not necessarily particularly, uh, loud or forceful, uh, in these kinds of settings, because I also don't like to speak in public, um, I, I mean, I'm kind of quiet here anyway, but I, I would not have said anything at all because I don't want to have that, it, you know, it feels like a point of contention that is only going to make whatever the situation is more challenging. So, my inclination is to, you know, the, the chair, we have decided who our chair is going to be and to have them run the meeting and to, um, you, you can totally disregard, um, disagree with what any, anyone is saying, but, uh, by letting the chair run the meeting, it gives people the opportunity, um, to, to hear whatever everyone else is saying, right? So there's, there's not people talking over one another and people have time to, um, you know, absorb the information and form their own thoughts in order to have a response. So, uh, I think we should let our chairs run the meeting and, and wait to be called on. Like, I, I mean, I, I feel like it's good manners and the best way that we can be our most organized selves, which is best for us and for the people who are watching the, and, or participating in, in some other way and are trying to hear what we have to say. So, I, yeah.
The, the one thing I would add is just, like, the, the simplest thing of all, is just mutual respect, right? Like, we need to talk to each other like we want to be talked to, for one, for two. We're modeling our behavior for an entire student body, for multiple student bodies and all. I, I think we need to be reflective of, like, an orderly body that is a group of folks who can disagree, who can have, you know, these divergent views and still actually like accomplish what we're here to do, right? Like, at the end of the day, like, we are still all people, right? Because the, the other side that I would add is that, like, that was probably the, the least ideal moment for somebody who might be like neurodivergent, like, that's not, it, it wasn't, there wasn't mutual respect, I'll say that. And, and, but moving forward, we can absolutely agree to have a, a standard that, that is based on mutual respect, I think. And then can we talk about public comment? Go, go ahead and then Jennifer?
I was just gonna suggest that, um, that the policy subcommittee take another look at this to see if they would like to propose any amendments to our policy.
Yep.
And, and perfectly okay to come back at the next meeting and say, we're fine.
Yeah.
So, Jennifer, then Irv.
So, as much as I agree that meeting rules are used for order and process, they can also be used to oppress. And the insistence on following rules no matter what is used to silence people. And the idea that, the idea that the chairs run the meeting, I, I understand that's how we operate, but that's very patriarchal and it's a tool of oppressors. And I won't agree to blanket respect for the chairs ruling under any circumstances, especially when the chair is chair of a committee that I'm not a member of. I can't agree to silencing voices. So, I, I'm gonna say again, like, it's okay for us to have differing opinions on how that meeting went down and, and what might happen in the future. But I, I would do the same again. And I, but, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't change what my, my actions and I would do the same again.
Uh, Irv and then Peter?
I mean, I, I, that's so Jennifer, I mean, that's you, Jennifer, what you just, that is you. And, uh, would, and I appreciate that. I would also like for you to appreciate that there are ways in which you could have done the same thing by what I suggested, which was call for a point of order. And then the same, and accomplish your objective, right there and there. And still you would have been a part of what this process is, our committee. Uh, and that's one of those things in Robert's Rules, where you call for a point of order specifically in chaotic situations and, and so that you can get the meeting back under control. And, and the, the other thing is that all of us, uh, can agree to disagree and we can do it in civil ways that still respect, respect each other. And that meeting was, you know, was, was really one of those emotionally-charged meetings where this kind of thing was more likely to happen than not to happen. So I, you know, I look at it and I, I don't, I don't want to put blame on anyone or, or chastise anyone for it. What, what I would like to say is, hey, what did we learn from this? There are some ways to deal with it in the future, let's go forward that way. I mean, because if you play the blame game, all you do is make, you know, you just, you don't lay the road for improvement. Improvement comes from understanding what is happening and then making some agreement as to not allowing it to happen again and laying down some procedures for that not to happen again.
Thank you, Irv. Uh, Peter?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I won't, I, I, I won't belabor the point, um, but, you know, the, the thing that I would hope would happen differently in that situation, Jennifer, is that you would, so, so I, 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 I hear you in terms of like, you know, the, the kind of-
Point of order. If members could please address the chair instead of each other, thank you.
Fair.
Absolutely, and I apologize for that. So, um, what I, I would like to have happen in the future, if, if any individual member feels so strongly about something that, that they want to just go ahead and do it before the full committee decides on what to do, is, is, is to use, use Robert's Rules of Order to, to, to adjudicate that. So, for example, we have, um, the, the policy that, that we shared, that if, to override a policy requires a, a two-thirds vote of, of the committee members present. And so it would have been, uh, you know, raise your hand to be recognized, I move to, uh, override the policy, is there a second, and then we discuss, and then we decide. You know, Ben and I would have had to work out, you know, the two, the two joint meeting thing, but, you know, that complication aside, then, then, and then you respect the will of the committee. By respect, I mean follow. I don't mean like, you know, pay deference and respect. You may, respect is maybe too charged of a word in, uh, for sure, a structure that has been dominated by white men over the course of many years. So, I, I totally get the, the, that. But, but what, what, what we should all want, what we should, we should all agree should happen is the will of the committee, right? And the chair, the only, the chair's only role in that, in addition to providing their own personal opinion and vote, is, is, is to referee and, and to, to, to adjudicate the, the structure of that process. And, and if any one of us, because we feel it's the right thing to do, just blows past that and, and, and does something before the committee decides on, takes, takes the will of the committee to their own hands, then that, that's using our own assertiveness to, to oppress everybody else's voice. Or suppress, I should say, oppress, oh, oppress is maybe too strong of a word, suppress. Because those members weren't as assertive, even though they may have felt differently. So that, that's, that's the last I'll say of that, I don't, I don't want to argue back and forth. I, I do think, um, what would be helpful for the policy subcommittee, so speaking as a policy subcommittee member, is if we had a little bit of guidance about what y'all want us to come back with. Like, I'm sure there will be differing opinions on the policy subcommittee, but what the change ought to be. So, is, uh, one suggestion is we could come back with like, uh, a list of options for the committee, it's specific to written public comment, that the, that the committee could, could evaluate if that might be helpful. But I'm, I'll certainly open up other suggestions of what you want us to still get.
Well, Margaret?
I just want to make the suggestion that before the committee starts its work in the fall or, or at the retreat or whenever you're going to start, that you talk about these procedures. These are the things you can do in certain situations so that people are aware. Because I know point of order from town meeting, but it's not what you described. So I wasn't aware that you could use point of order that way. Point of order to me is you stop the discussion and have the vote, let's get on with it. So, so I wouldn't have known this. So, I think to have, to, to, to lay stuff out about how you're gonna proceed with some of these things would be really helpful.
Uh, Allison?
I, I think, um, just to the comment, I just want to reflect, when I first joined, um, school committee, six years ago, five, almost six years ago, um, I looked at Robert's Rules and thought, oh my gosh, this is so formal, so stodgy, so out of date, so old-fashioned, how couldn't we use these stuffy, stuffy rules? You, you know, white male, um, it's even named after a guy. And as I've been on the committee and served on the committee, I've come to appreciate it. It may not be the ideal scenario, but I appreciate the framework of sort of how we talk to each other, how we have a point of order and how we use that so that it helps us, not just in, in evenings, um, meetings where we're talking about non-controversial or, um, small topics, but particularly in situations like the, the meeting that I attended remotely on the, whatever date that was, the sixteenth of May. And there's been others, that's not the only one, um, that, that those, the framework, whatever rules we decide to use to, um, manage ourselves during these meetings are sort of what help us hold it together during those difficult, difficult meetings where we have controversial or difficult topics for us to discuss. And particularly when there is diversity and, and disagreement within the committee, it ensures that each of us has the opportunity to hear each other and to speak. And, um, so whether it's Robert's Rules or some other format, I, I, I understand the perspective that rules might be sort of a system of oppression. That said, we just got done talking about establishing a new rule for our library materials and, and curriculum materials. If we didn't believe in the, um, the, the requirement or the necessity for rules to help guide and support our community and our behaviors for what is acceptable and expected within our community, then we wouldn't even have a school committee, frankly, because this policy subcommittee is about establishing rules that help guide and govern the, um, the, what happens in our district. We talked about it earlier about, um, when we were talking about LGBTQIA+ students and sort of policies, procedures that we need to put into place. So, I, I find it difficult to believe that we don't buy the, the power and necessity of rules to help and support us in making sure that we are, um, doing the business that we need to be doing and that all the voices that want to be heard can be heard. So, to your question, Peter, about specific guidance, um, I think one question that I would, um, like to hear sort of options back about is sort of the role of the chair with, um, with moderating public comment. So, we heard one member, um, talk about wanting, you know, that the chair doesn't have discretion on that. So if that's the case, then let's talk about ways that we can sort of remove discretion or whether we want to keep that discretion in there of the chair for moderating public comment. And I think the other question, um, and again, it only comes up when we have a packed room with a volat-, you know, high-interest topic, but this question about do we display, um, display, not display or read, um, written public comment, I think is one that I would love to sort of, for us as a committee, to hear what, the options that the policy subcommittee has discussed and proposed.
And I would second that, like I'd say, we, we said a lot of words to get to that part and I think that's the single most important part of this item. I just, just, I mean, every, everybody has opinions and so forth. But I just, just, like, when it comes to the idea of rules, I just want to point out to everybody here that, like, we all followed a set of rules to get here in the first place, right? Like, so, unless we're ready to like tear the entire system down, which, I mean, holler at me when you're ready, but, I, I, I think we do need to figure out how to establish some norms and make things work within the, the structure that exists. But, does anybody have anything else to add that needs to go to the-
Mike, I'll, I'll try this.
How about it?
So, if you think that was a charged meeting, you missed it in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Those were some charged meetings. And I have to say that I was greatly offended by the actions of one of our members at that meeting because there was a reason that we put those policies in place. And it was to try and keep order. I mean, I was so close to running around and grabbing and unplugging that microphone, but I did not. Cause I did not want to create a scene. But there really is a reason why those policies are in place and we need to respect that. But I was, I was willing to listen to the public that night and agree to have the public read those comments. But I will stand very firm and taller than at my five-five that the school committee should not be reading any public comments. Because the tone, the, the meaning behind them is lost when the school committee reads them. There were a couple of times during that meeting that there were pauses and the way that the tone was read was different for two or three of them than there was for the rest of them. And we need to stay away from that.
Fair. Does anybody else have anything else to add to this? Margaret, go ahead.
I hope you will include in one of your, you know, if you're going to come back with possible ways to present public comment, that we really think about making it available, the, the written stuff available to the public before the meetings. So that they have the opportunity to see it. Is it available ever to the public besides watching the video? Do they ever see it?
But it's, it's available on board docs, yeah.
But it's attached after the meeting.
No, it's supposed to be attached before the meeting, yeah. It doesn't always work out that way procedurally, but that's, that's how it's supposed to go down.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything to add? So it's on C, with a D, which is... So we'll move on to E, which is policy discussion and possible vote on policy IJA.
I, I think that was just a duplicate of the posting of the previous policy.
And the next thing we have here is the track and field project update.
I'll be, I'll be extraordinarily brief. Yes, I haven't spent as much time on that over the last couple of weeks as I would have. As circumstances have not evolved the way they did. So there's not a tremendous amount in, as far as details of the project itself. I will update the, the committee on funding, uh, options that we pursued. Reached out to, to each of the, the, uh, of the towns, Pelham, Levert and Shute's Berry regarding CPA funding. And, uh, broad spectrum of points of view nonetheless. But none of them came through as far as a, a, a funding source for, for this project. So it'll be more reliant on, on fundraising to get that project completed. I think, I think I'll stop there. I mean, I think there's, you know, you know, as far as planning is concerned, you know, that's, we'll probably likely do what's called an owner's project manager to help with this. Because it's going to be, um, given the variability of sources of funds as well as different kinds of funds, in other words, in kind versus just sort of cash. I think having an owner, a project manager to help, um, you know, work with designers and ultimately work with the, uh, the, the construction group would probably be best to manage that. And probably wise as to, as far as a project. So I'll just say that about it as a way to approach this. And, and they can kind of focus in on the tasks at hand and, and manage the amount of variability that the project may have and, and be able to come back and, and provide updates on progress and choices that may need to be made as, as we go through.
Do you have any, oh, we do. Margaret?
I have one clarification about Pelham. At the town meeting, they agreed that they would provide community preservation fund money if it was natural turf. They did not say they would not support the project. The other, I have a question. Do we have any update at all on the private fundraising? I've heard nothing since January.
I do not. I have not asked the question of the fundraisers. I haven't had an opportunity to have that conversation, but...
I mean, I can just say that those are really well-attended fundraising event at East Hampton Savings Bank. Don Town Amherst the other day, there were a large number of ARP staff, a large number of families, an enormous number of student athletes. They saw a, a, a video promotion of, of the project. The, the bank pledged, I, I remember the, the amount, but they pledged a, a matching, a donation. There were a lot of public officials there. So, yeah, I mean, I don't have a, you know, I did, I don't know their, their, their current, you know, dollar value committed right now. But I'm, I, I, you know, I talked to a number of members, the Amherst Heart King Boosters, our volunteer parent organization in support of student athletics. They were all pretty, you know, jazzed up and excited and said they were really actively involved in fundraising for the effort, so.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
So Doug, you said the three non-Amherst CPAs won't be contributing to the project as it currently stands? So has, so it sounds like we would, we'll be relying on fundraising and municipal funds. Have other, any other sources of funding been explored?
Well, we do, we, I just should say, just to be more clear, Pelham did commit a while back, back in 2020, some funding for design work, so they, from their CPA. So we do have some CPA from Pelham, but they weren't wanting to extend it beyond that at, at this point. There are a number of grants and, and programs of that sort. I think that's, again, one of those where like an owner, project manager can, can probably take a little more lead on that. There's a number of organizations. Sometimes there's a lot that goes with it. We have, you know, a, a perfect example is the tennis courts by the middle school. We get a grant from the USTA, we have to paint it in certain colors and we have to put a plaque on the outside of the fence that says the USTA and, and that sort of thing. I've looked at some others just casually, I guess I should say, you know. They all want their sort of logo and branding. And so that's a, a piece that, that might be worth exploring. It might be more, um, uh, heavy-handed than, than, you know, what US School Committee want. In other words, you know, there's organizations, you know, USA Football, there's, I'm sure there's, you know, lacrosse and, and field hockey and ultimate and every other sport that, you know, has a national organization has probably got some, uh, you know, varying grant programs to help, you know, fund things like fields and that sort of thing. So that's, that is the next step, but, but nothing concrete at the moment.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So, oh, sorry. So to what extent would, will this body be involved in applying for or accepting grant funds or programs or anything like that?
Great question. Well, I think the thing that I would suggest is this. It's probably a circumstance where we'll probably apply for the grant. But then to actually accept that would require the school committee to, to be comfortable with that, basically. In other words, to be accepting that, that, that resource. You know, generally with grants, we don't do that. These kind of grants are more gifts. So if you think about our gift policy, it's much more in parallel to that. So, you know, it might be that we get a grant, you know, that someone, whether it be someone like in my role or, or someone that, you know, in the community gets a grant and we may look at the organization, you may, you may look at the organization and go, we don't want that association for whatever reason, and decide to turn it down. And that's perfectly acceptable. And so any of those types of grants or funding sources or, you know, or what they may ask for in kind. You know, they may want their logo to be 27 feet tall on the side of the grandstand or something like that. And you're like, we're just not going to go there as much as it would be helpful, you know. So I think those are, those are the places where you guys will have, you know, authority.
Peter?
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, so I, I, I think, you know, your posture on grants should be apply. And then if there's any question, you know, bring it back to the committee. I mean, in terms of like, uh, you know, branding and signage and logos and whatnot, I'm sure that's something we'd all be interested, interested in, not, not just for this project, but for any capital project. I mean, it's, it's no secret to this committee that we have to be pretty darn creative about, you know, securing funds from anywhere and everywhere we can get them in the future. And we've talked ad nauseam this year about the serious constraints about our, our operational budget. But there's just as much long-term concern about the, the capital, uh, you know, stability. Not just things we want to invest in, but just, you know, I mean, this, this building we're in has not been invested in in a significant way in, in many years. So, um, you know, while, while some of those things might, might not be in, in our ideal vision to see some for-profit company's name emblazoned on something, you have to sort of weigh the pros and cons of that, I think, versus, you know, of not having something be here. And so that might not, that might just, just, I think, a strategy to just keep open for, for all, all of our capital projects.
Right. And I, I would say, you know, the previous school committees have had a more, a less accepting view of, of sort of corporate sponsorship. And so, and, and that may be something that there are some corporate sponsors you're okay with and some corporate sponsors you're not okay with, depending on what and how and where they invest and, and participate in their business. So those are all factors to be considered, um, you know, as you think about those. And I think that's, that's part and parcel of the conversation about it.
Steve?
A couple of things. The first thing is, you're right, Doug. Because when I first started on this committee, we decided that we would not accept any payments for logos on anything. It was, it was shortly after the tennis courts. And the other thing I would like to say is, as the Shute's Berry School representative to this regional school committee that's appointed, and this is my ninth time, ninth time being appointed, and as a graduate of the Starkbridge School of Horticulture, Agriculture and Horticulture degree, I would like to point out to anybody that wants to think that buying new lawnmowers and slicer seeders and overseaters and core aerators is not going to solve the problems of our athletic fields. Without fixing the foundation, that no matter what we do, we can put a really cool mohawk on that thing. But without fixing the drainage and the core of the field, no matter how much cool grass is on top, it's still going to be a dangerous field to play on.
Thank you. Anyone else want to weigh in on the track and field update? We'll go Margaret and then Sarah Bass.
Okay. I guess in looking at the, the report last year, I have some concern, you know, I understand that whole area was a swamp.
Still is.
Still is. Tan Brook runs open behind the lacrosse field and then comes right along the parking lot between the field and the parking lot. And it's got a culvert. The report says their cost does not include any engineering having to do with the culvert. So if they start and the conservation committee or somebody says, wait a minute, we got some problems here, you know, it would be really nice to hear from the Amherst Conservation people about this. Because you could start down a road and discover you're in a real mess.
If I may, yeah, the, the, the culverted part of the Tan Brook runs really white right through the fields. It, it's actually not even peripheral. It's like right down central, as it were. And so, you know, it is, it is a circumstance that's been culverted for a long time, you know, the stability and it, but I think, um, we're fortunate in, in that the town of Amherst has some, some pretty good expertise on staff, particularly around this type of, of, of culverted stream. So hopefully that will be helpful for us to be proactive in thinking about. We certainly know about it. I mean, I, that's been a question mark that we've put in front of Weston and Sampson both back in 2016 when they did a sort of initial master planning process. But also more recently, when we asked them to sort of update some of their figures is, you know, identifying that as a, as a key thing that has to be addressed. Because it, it, you know, it's, it's not going anywhere. The stream's there. And I think it's, you know, but, but I think we're fortunate in having some staff on, 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 you know, the town payroll that can be helpful as far as being, uh, you know, not caught off guard by something like that sneaking up and suddenly tripling the cost or something like that. So hopefully we'll be able to keep that in mind and, and, you know, go in eyes wide open to make good decisions around that.
Um, I just wanted to say, I think the use of a OPM, the owner's project manager, is a really good one. Because they will have expertise in, like, that, that's what they do, right? They're not also running a school or a DPW department or a town or any number of other things. Like, that is their job. And part of what an OPM does is manage cost and like, track all of that. So the project can stay as close to budget as possible. Because things change and things happen depending on permits and where the Tan Brook, how big it wants to be and whatever number of other things. But having a, having an OPM, I think, is a really smart choice for the, for the district to have.
Stephen?
So for anyone that's curious where Tan Brook ends up, it's the campus pond. So you can say that, you know, it goes under the, under here, but it literally goes under the entire center of Amherst and spins around and comes out of the campus pond.
Yes, I've seen the map. Yeah.
All right. Anything else to add? All right. So we will move on to Warren. Oh, no, I'm skipping. Sorry, moving too fast here. Evaluation tool approval, we are not there. Go ahead.
Um, I move that we extend our meeting beyond the two and a half hours for additional 30 minutes.
Second?
I guess it's seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
I abstain.
Fair enough. All right. So we will continue.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Move on to the, the evaluation tool approval part. We're not there yet, right? Is that accurate?
So, I mean, we're in uncharted waters, right? So, uh, normally if, if our permit superintendent was here, we would proceed on with the superintendent evaluation process, right? Approving the tool and then all, all the other steps. I, I, I think it's, I think the, the, the simple, uh, most reasonable thing to do is, is to postpone the evaluation process. So, I mean, normally the superintendent would, he'd provide us the artifacts document. Do you socialize that with us? We, we would then present the final evaluation in open session. He also has, and we have the opportunity by, by the process to find the contract, the ability to meet with him individually about those individual evaluations, which sometimes run in the past. So I don't, I don't see how we can do that without, well, in here. So I think we need to at least, you know, delay it until, uh, till the end of the summer. And then if we're still in this position at the end of the summer, because we don't know when, uh, when the superintendent's returning. And then, you know, reassess then. And I, I think we did, so we, I'm not, my memory is a little foggy at this hour, but I think we did this during the first COVID year in which we were so wrapped up in everything COVID all the time that we just kicked the whole process to the, uh, to the, to the end of the summer, beginning of the next school year. So that's what, that's what I, I think we should have.
Uh, Jennifer?
I agree with Peter. I don't think we should spend another minute of the committee's time on the evaluation tool until we have a new timeline of like, when the artifacts document is going to be presented. I, I think that we should just delay. Put off, postpone, whatever.
I see nothing but nodding heads. I think, dang it. Go ahead, Stephen, sorry.
So this is, this is my once a year shout-out to Ms. Wes Morland, Emily Marriott from Pelham and Adra Krasinski from Levert, who spent literally 40 to 50 hours putting this tool together when, when the school committee was in some sort of a little mess as far as doing the superintendent evaluation prior to that. So I just want to thank them again and next year I'll give them another shout-out.
Much appreciated. All right. So then we will move on to, I think this is accurate, future, future, future agenda planning. I apparently am from Boston now. Future agenda planning. So the, the, the one thing that I copied on would be the, the ARMS LGBTQIA+ support update with Diego. And then, um, we had an executive session for a grievance scheduled. So pushing that to the next meeting is probably, I think we can do that, yeah. So we're going to go Peter, Margaret, and then Irv.
So the policy we talked about tonight, IJA, um, discussion possible vote. So we'll bring the, we'll bring those updates back. So we'll bring the, we'll bring those updates back, the librarians talked about.
Both, yeah.
And then if, I'll have to see what the timing is on our policy subcommittee meetings, but if, if we happen to meet by then and then have something to bring back on public comment, we'll, we'll, we'll try to do that as well. We have, we have a meeting on the twentieth and the twenty-seventh, is that right, right now?
Twentieth region, possible joint twenty-seventh, is that accurate?
I, I had thought that the twenty-seventh was a meeting of another committee, but.
All right, I, I just have a.
It somehow got put as joint, but I don't know where that came from.
Right, right, I don't, I don't remember the, the discussion that led to that being in there. Margaret?
I think I know the answer, which is that would have been our meeting when we both voted on the superintendent evaluation. The joint.
I, I think, but we, we didn't do it jointly before, because it's two separate evaluations, so. But, yeah.
I think it's, I thought it was presentation of the artifacts.
Right, that makes sense.
Last year was a joint meeting.
Except that's the last meeting of the year. But yes, all, all good thoughts.
It's too late.
I had an order, I lost the order. Margaret, Irv.
Maybe, maybe the, the regional chair can meet with the, the Amherst chair to discuss the schedule.
We, we can suggest that to them. Margaret?
I don't know exactly if this is the right time, but I just wanted to tell everybody that Pelham has its next meeting on Tuesday. At that point in time, I will no longer be a member of the region. I decided several months ago to step down at this point. I thought about it last year and changed my mind, but there are other things that I would like to be doing. And I'm actually now sorry that I'm not going to be staying, because I would like to be part of what's going forward, but I won't be. So there'll be somebody else here. And as a goodbye present, I have a document that I created, and I'm going to send it to everybody, it's a Word document, because we've talked multiple times about onboarding new members. So I've been collecting acronyms and other things over the course of the last two years, and I've put it all together in a Word document with links to everything I could find a link for. And I have to say, I wish I'd known some of this stuff much earlier, you know? So I think it's maybe not just for new people, but for everybody. So I'll still be a member tomorrow and I'll email it to everybody. And I just, I want to say thank you. I, you know, it, I went on in the fall of 2019. We all know what happened in March of 2020. Not anticipating meeting every week all summer long. But the, you know, everything has just been a really good experience for me. And people say thank you, but, but I'm really glad I did it. And working with everybody has been a pleasure, I have to say, so. I won't see you here again, except maybe from out there, maybe I'll make public comments.
Please do. Peter?
Oh my gosh, I'm so sad. Dude, you've, you've been such a grounded and thoughtful point of view on the committee. You know, I mean, the tumultuousness of what we've, this committee's been through, you know, with COVID and everything over the years is, you know, we all know that. You've just been such, I think, such a very gra, every time you speak, I'd say every time, the vast majority of time that you speak, you bring up something that I would not have considered. Like, you have, you're very grounded in your perspective. I think that comes from like, how well and open-mindedly you, you, you listen, how authentically you listen. I never have ever once gotten the sense from you that you're like pushing some agenda, that you're like using rhetoric or pressure. It's like, it's always been from the same steady thoughtful place. And I have just a tremendous amount of appreciation for that. You've been, you, you are, you have been a tremendous service to our district and our committees and a real model public servant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, it could be my age, too.
Twenty-eight, right? Does anyone else have anything?
You got to come back for a future agenda planning?
Yep, that's where I'm at.
Right, so I would like to make sure that we start, we do two things, start discussing the possibility of how to go forward with some kind of healing process within this school community. We, we need to do that, and we should lead it and not be led. And the second thing is related to that, is we need, we would like, I would like to have as a future agenda item, starting a discussion and outlining a process and procedure for going forward into looking at what went wrong, how it went wrong. Possibility, even the possibility of, of having an ex officio committee of community members be a part of that. But that would send a strong commi, a strong message to the community that we are taking this really, really seriously. And we're, we're not going to just leave it at some written thing. But we're going to, we're going to look at it in a systematic way.
I'll wordsmith that later, I got the, the gist of that. Peter?
Yeah, so I, I, I agree with, with, with the, with the, I agree with the, the, the value with the goal that, that Irv's outlined. I, I think my concern with, with the, is that we need to properly scope and articulate the agenda items, because, you know, we have active Title IX investigations going on right now. We don't, none of us knows the exact scope of those and what those results will bring. And, you know, a, a, a huge part of, of saying what went wrong and how to make sure it doesn't happen is understanding what happened. Right, and for, for sure, and we all discussed this a couple hours ago, you know, we are concerned about far more than just what might be in a Title IX report, what might be accessible to us in terms of, you know, legally permissible, shareable information with us. But that, but that's certainly like the basis. And, and I, I don't, I would be hesitant to, you know, scope an item where we're talking about creating yet another layer above and in parallel to Title IX that is looking at, at, at similar things. You know, absolutely, my core reaction is the school committee members, I want to get to the bottom of this. Right, absolutely, like, that's, there's no doubt in my mind about that. It's just a matter of how, how we proceed formally and so first kind of like letting that stuff happen as we do all the other things. I'm trying not to cross the line into deliberation here, just in terms of like agenda planning, what we want to talk about, how we want to scope it. And it's just, which is also about setting expectations for the community.
Is it? The, the thing that I would add to that is that I think we should absolutely have a review of, of what went wrong as soon as we get the, the findings from the Title IX investigation. And I, and I think we should, that should be like the bulk of a meeting, right? Like, that's, that's my personal opinion, I'm not grabbing the reins here.
Title IX is specific in terms of what it will investigate. And what, and, and that does not necessarily get at the kinds of issues that I'm referring to. Title IX is really, really specific, it's straight down the line in terms of its legal definition, what it can and cannot cover. And what I'm talking about has nothing to do with Title IX. It has to do with organization and how the organization funded, you know, reacted, did not react, how it got itself into a particular situation is, what, what could have happened or should have happened. Anyway, it's an organizational issue to me that there was an organizational failure, and it has nothing to do with Title IX.
But I, I think just without discussing in detail the scope of the investigation, I think that some of that will come out in the periphery. And then, and then other things that, that don't come out in that investigation, we could then address later on. But yeah, that, yeah, that's as much as I'm going to say publicly. Jennifer, and then Allison? Oh, sorry, sorry, Allison, then Jennifer, I had it backwards.
I wanted to, I want to react, respond to that, but I, I also would like to add, it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, but before the end of the year, I think it would be helpful for us to, as a committee, plan when our first couple of meetings are going to be in the new year, so that we know that before we disappear and stop checking email. The, but I do want to, Title IX actually does talk about, does, Title IX does cover how issues are reported and dealt with. So that absolutely is part of the investigation, is, is, is what, do we have the proper, you know, do we have the proper systems in place, the processes in place, and, and people that are responding to complaints and issues of experience raised by students and staff? So, but regardless, we're talking about agenda, we're not talking about what's included in that. And I, and I hear you, Peter, but I do think that we, we're creeping beyond this agenda topic. And so I would just add my voice to, regardless of whether we agree or disagree, whether that's part of Title IX investigation or not, I do think we can be helped by having more information on the table so that part of our discussion can be, what more information do we need in addition to what that investigator, that third-party investigator has unearthed? So I for one would, would support waiting until we have that report so we can have a complete and full discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind folks that June twentieth, we will be talking with Diego, Sharon, the principal of ARMS about what supports were in place at the time that, that these allegations took place. So that's, I, I suppose the tip of the iceberg that Irv is talking about.
Are we voting on what goes on your future agenda?
No, we're suggesting things to go on future agendas.
And what are, are we then debating?
Well, it seems like we are kind of venturing into that, right? We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be, but it feels like we're.
Right, we're debating that, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, I suggested something.
That's, we wrote it.
We're going to debate about whether it should go on or not go on. And, and, and there's, you know, maybe somewhere in the rules there that, that you can debate that and then decide by vote or non-vote or whatever that it goes on the agenda planning. But I, I wasn't under the impression that that was something that had to be, go under a vote or agreement.
Yeah, it is, and, and the way it was suggested was at a future meeting, so I think we're covered by that, so that's, we're good to go. Jennifer?
I have two things. First, I volunteer to work with Irv and the chair to come up with specific and scoped out and appropriate agenda items that Irv mentioned. Second, Allison mentioned summer schedule or summer first meetings of the new year. I, I think we might want to consider that we might have to meet earlier than we normally would if the results of the Title IX investigation are going to come in in August. So maybe we, maybe the chair could think about like urging people to check their emails in case we need to, in case a, an earlier meeting needs to be called.
And, and when do we typically have the retreat? I just, because that's.
August.
Right, like, it's usually like.
Like the week before school.
Okay.
Is it, is it possible for us, I mean, this is out of, out of sequence here, but Jennifer just mentioned something, and then you think about it, it comes out, the report comes out in August. We're, the report's going to go to the superintendent, but then from there to us. And, and the thing that we need, I would like to have in place is that that, when that gets to the superintendent, that it goes no further than the superintendent until that is dispersed to us. And we have to have some kind of agreement in place as to what's going, once that hits.
We're, we're really.
We're way off.
We're way off.
No, I just, we, I mean.
So.
We got to think about this.
Definitely. Go ahead.
So, so to sort of formally and informally address a procedural question from a little bit ago. Yes, if, it, it is possible to adjudicate agenda planning in the formal Roberts rules where people vote to have, you know, and that does happen on committees that are larger and in more disagreement. The vast majority of time, our agendas are such that we have an informal style of play in which people suggest things and then they're, they're added on. I think in this case, you know, there's a general topic that we all want to talk about, and now we're talking about in the scope of agenda planning, when does that make sense to talk about? What should that focus of that agenda item be and, you know, how should that be sequenced? That's, that's, that's all. So I don't, I don't think anybody's disagreeing about the value and the need to discuss the topic, just about C plans.
Yep, I would agree. So just looking at August, what is it? Fifteenth and twenty-second are both dates in August that we could think about having a future meeting that we would then have an agenda for. So anybody interested in either of those dates? We'll tentatively kind of like pencil them in, one can be the retreat, one can be the Title IX discussion, or the investigation discussion, I guess. But we won't know that until we have.
I'm, I'm away that week of the fifteenth, but that's, I mean, if you have a quorum, you have a quorum.
We may need to doodle poll it, given people's summer schedules.
We just need the tentative now, we're good. All right, is there anything else that for, to add on to the twentieth agenda?
Not so much add on to the twentieth, but there's two things that I really like us to hear about. One is where are we with the math program? Because I have to say that for, I spent months working on getting rid of the IMP math program we had, and I worked with CPAC and others to, to do away with it. And then we chose a new program. And for a year and a half, I was telling people how exciting it was that we had an online math program during the pandemic. And I learned over a year and a half after that, that that program stunk and the math teachers just did away with it on their own, which is good, because they know what works and what doesn't work. But we were in the dark, so I'd like to hear where we are two years later, where we are with the math program. And same thing with the block scheduling. That came, I voted yes for that when the superintendent brought it forward, because we were coming out of the pandemic and he said that we need to do that right now to make the schedules work. But I would have voted no, and I'd like to hear more about why we're using the block and if we can't go back to other scheduling, because we spent months talking about the schedule prior to that to get to the one where we went from trimester to semesters and the seven-period schedule that we had, and then we just gave it away. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else to add to the June twentieth meeting? So when we, when we get to that point, yeah, I would echo what Jennifer said, you should absolutely check your email over the summer, not maybe habitually, but every now and again to see when the August meeting is coming up. Are we able to move forward to the warrant report? Is there somebody who can read the warrant report?
Yes, I can, except for it tells me I need to sign into my DACA, but I'm just. What is my password? I don't know. I don't know what my password is. I can't do it.
It's attached to Board docs.
Is it attached to Board docs? All right, let me go to Board docs then, because just locked me out of my.
You'll need to sign into Board docs to see them, I think, or are they posted publicly?
They're posted publicly. Oh, chocolate, gotta have one to eat.
And where would that be in Board docs?
The agenda item?
Yeah, you got to go to 2023. And whatever today's date is, this one? Hit agenda. And scroll down.
All right, public comment, chairs up there, school announcements, protocols. Evaluation.
There it is, warrant report.
Nothing comes.
And then scroll down. Nope, there's nothing there.
They're not posted publicly.
I can't find it.
Can you log into Board docs, Irv?
I'm in Board docs.
No, I mean, can you log in with your credentials?
You want to use my laptop or?
I was going to say, do you want to use one?
Good. Oh yeah, let's see, it's the computer, size of palm of my hand.
If you tap on the, tap on each document, it'll come up.
What's she talking about?
We got something else there. If you tap one of these.
All right, I, I wrote.
They're stuck at me.
Authorized by my signature. Authorized by my signature, repayables and the amount of... Eight hundred one thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and ten cents.
Okay, then we gotta close it. Or, I don't know. Yeah, close it. We gotta get to the next document. I don't have my glasses on. Let's trade places.
This is yours, I was, tell me how to get to the next document.
I can pass up the chips, but not the chocolate.
Yeah, I just did that. Irv Rhodes, authorized by my, by my signature, payables in the amount of one million sixty-seven thousand seven hundred nine dollars and sixty cents. And that was dated on five oh five, twenty twenty-three, and I signed it on five oh five, twenty twenty-three. Now, the, that also includes general fund expenditures of nine hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred nineteen, revolving fund expenditures of twenty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, grant fund expenses of seventy-five thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and thirteen cents, gift funds expenses of nothing, and capital fund expenses of two hundred ninety dollars and eighty cents. Irv Rhodes, authorized by my signature, high school student activities transfer in amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, and I signed that, and I date, it's dated May eighth. Irv Rhodes, authorized by my signature, payables in amount of hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred ninety dollars and four cents for a warrant dated May eighth, twenty twenty-three. This includes general fund expenses of hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety, nine hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-four cents, revolving fund expenses zero. Did I just read that? Because it sounds the same. Grant fund expenses of fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents, gift, gift funds of zero, and this was signed on the thirteenth of May. Irv Rhodes, authorized by my, by my signatures, payable in amount of... Where is it? Seven hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred fifteen dollars and forty cents, dated on April, I mean, May third. It was signed by me on, hmm, it's in April, May second. Irv Rhodes, authorized by my signature to the high school student activities transfer in amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred nine dollars and forty-eight cents for a warrant dated on, uh, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I signed it on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Irv Rhodes, authorized by my signature, payables in amount of eight hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. This was dated on, uh, May thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-three. I signed it on May thirtieth. Irv Rhodes, authorized by my signatures, payables in amount of four hundred and, you know, four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents, general fund expenses of four hundred, four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents. And I signed, it's signature, I signed it on... There it is. There's no date on there.
May twenty-fourth.
It has to be May twenty-fourth.
I'm lost.
Irv Rhodes, authorized by my signature, repayables in amount of hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred ninety dollars and four cents for a warrant dated, uh, May eighth, twenty twenty-three. General fund expenses of, of a hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-four cents, grant fund expenses of fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Finally authorized, payable in amount of whatever. I, I signed this on the eighteenth of May. And thank you. How was it?
You're welcome.
We'll move on to accepting gifts. Does somebody want to read that off? Jennifer?
I move that we accept a gift from anonymous number three, four, two, five to support Community Building Awards, two at two hundred and fifty dollars for a total of five hundred dollars.
Second, all in favor? Passage unanimously. I'll take another motion.
I move adjourn.
There we go.
Yes, thank you, Sarah Bass.
Do we need discussion? All in favor? And we adjourn, thank you.